Or comments by the public may be submitted on at any time by email to city.council@ci.bremerton.us. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. Any of the items approved for action by the council tonight will be placed on the December 18th, 2024 City Council meeting agenda or as otherwise determined. Denise, Councilor Denise Frye will be attending remotely potentially. Let me take a look. Oh, she is. She's right there. I couldn't wait to see her. Oh goodness. Looking all tropical. I love it. Okay, so for our agenda briefings, approximately five minutes, including Q and A. Item A nine requested a little additional time. First up, we have Captain Aaron Elton and Brendan Perko of Common Street here to present item A one, Contract Modification Agreement Number Two with Common Street Consulting LLC for Homelessness Response Property Management Program Services. So Denise, was this discussed at Public Safety at all?
This specifically wasn't discussed. We did have a really thorough report, the meeting before, but weren't able to have this completed on our agenda. And we felt it was fine to bring it into study session.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'm going to let you take it away, but I'm going to hand this to Anna because I grabbed the wrong notebooks to take notes in. I'll just be right back when you start. You're welcome to start your presentation. I'll be right back.
Please start your presentation.
Sure. So as most of us are aware and know, we've been in a partnership with Common Streets, providing outreach for our homeless population in the city of Bremerton. We started on a pilot program, not really knowing what we know now. But if we started that a number, that number would be surpassed unfortunately. But I think by the end of this year, we realized exactly what it takes to deal with the challenges that we face here in Bremerton in terms of homeless outreach. And so we would like to engage in a contract with Common Streets in 2025 to continue the partnerships that they have with not only the police department, but Public Works and all the city departments. And it will come at a little bit higher cost, knowing what we know now with the numbers that we have and the statistics that we've gathered from nearly a year of working together. Indeed. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to answer questions.
Okay. All right, councilors, questions for our guests? I'm going to go ahead and defer to Denise first. Do you have any questions for our guests? On this contract modification?
I'm assuming that they're going to be answered. We've certainly heard presentation about what services they're delivering and so forth. I think everyone is glad to have them on board. But there may be some specific questions that councilors have, certainly want to flush those out.
Yeah, Eric, go right ahead.
Okay, so the contract costs not to exceed $323,000 and change. But Captain Did I just promote?
That's great.
Aaron's good.
Captain Aaron, no.
Yeah, no problem.
No, no, I was going to call you Captain Elton. You used to be Lieutenant Elton. I just want to make sure I didn't unofficially promote you.
I'm just glad you didn't demote me.
All right. So that's always
That's correct. Yeah.
So it says in there that we allocated $212,000 for 2025. That was our anticipated. And maybe Mr. Riley can talk about this. I hope the answer is not, well, if we need it, we'll take it out of the ending fund balance. Because that's a common, that's something that we say way too often. So help me out here or help us out. It's going out.
Yeah, please. No, I appreciate it.
So yeah, you're okay. The way the contract's written, we have $212,000 on the table. What the need is for your government to admit that the full amount. So it provides an opportunity if funds, we have fine funds. We're not looking to go any fund balance to fund the difference. Maybe looking for funding grants, maybe that are allowed and often to find funding that's out there to be able to increase if we find funding.
Well, are we going to monitor our burn rate then?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we're not like, oh, we've used $212,000 and it's August. And so now we're not going to have any more. So you're
Exactly. We're looking at where we're at, the burn rate, monitoring what level of service to get the most out of the contract. And hoping to be able to find, you know, the level they're at right now. There's a lot of additional funds, but right now we don't have it.
Okay, and then I noticed in the contract, so Captain Elton, obviously you like the services being provided. You want to be here tonight to recommend this to us. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, so it is quite a bit of money and I saw the hourly rate. One of the things I saw is apparently we don't have anybody local from the organization. So we charge eight, you charge 82 miles round trip from up here. Is that included? The mileage, I understand, but do you charge the hourly rate as well during the drive time?
Yeah, so we do have one individual who's around the peninsula, just about five miles away. So that's the good news there. We do charge, however, we're utilizing drive time all the time. We just drive. It's coordination. So sometimes that's not charged because we're doing the projects.
Have you expanded your services to other municipalities or northern counties? Do you want to get some more efficiencies and maybe have more personnel? Do kids have county? How's that working?
Yeah, so currently we have multiple projects that bring us out to the peninsula. So that's why we're able to sort of leverage that drive time and address it out there too. In the event that we have to have an exclusive response, an immediate response or what we're doing right now, response, we have and we would love to have as many projects out there as possible. So.
And I understand the bid process. We can't put this out for a bid and pick the lowest bidder. But at some point, Captain, are we going to do an RFP just to see what other competition is out there?
I don't think that we're against it. I think what we saw the last time was it's pretty niche market and what the services they provide are not provided by many people. That's why we didn't get any other takers.
But I would imagine that once someone sees your business model, you have, you will have competitors beat down already. So I'd like that Police Department to keep that on the horizon. Just to be good stewards of our money, just nothing wrong with competition, right? Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I should have probably deferred to Jane or Michael first on Public Safety Committee for any questions before I went to other councilors. Just do either of you have any questions?
Okay, the only question I have, so I know you have, or at least you used to have contracts with Hoots Sound Energy. So anybody else on the peninsula? You with Kitsap County or Polesville or
In communications web, Brett, just pictures.
Okay, but you look at all their sites. Make sure nobody's okay. All right, well, hopefully other people get on board to the same kind of system. I think it's, it's working really well as far as I can tell. And I'm really glad that we are taking this off of the police's shoulders the way it was. I know there's still some a lot of effort on the police department's part, but not as much. So just statements, no questions.
Great. And I know Anna's been out with you all a few times, right? And you have the next year, you have the floor now. Questions? He said no. Yeah.
Thank you. So happy to see you this evening. Escorting and accompaniment, that's just for city of Bremerton employees, right? That's not like taking people to rehab. Okay. My next one is you're working directly with the city's homelessness response property management program. What is that? It's my first time hearing of it.
Well, that's what we called originally for oversight, for the city oversight. It would be the program of the cities and we would report to the city in general, which Elton.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And just to Eric's point, remember we did that contract modification on this contract a month or two ago? For like what, 30, 34 grand or something?
I think it was over 40.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it gets up towards the sum they're asking for. Super extremely very happy to have you guys here. Just a couple of things that I don't think are, that we want to dive into. But having a day tent near the Salvation Army would, from our conversations, would increase your efficiency, be able to find people and follow up on would reduce the burden on Public Works to pick up garbage all over. Because there'd be refuse bins right there and porta sans for the other refuse that Public Works is currently picking up on. Is this council interested in discussing that at some future point?
Sounds like, is that a go to the order piece? Yeah, it sounds like it's not germane to the topic of the contract modification. Because this involves, you know, other moving parts. Okay, let's circle back to that at the end of the meeting.
Salvation Army on board for that. Yeah, I just Yeah, they have We could not possibly
Jeff, do you have any questions? Or do you still have the floor? Okay, here, go right ahead.
That is germane to the contract.
Thank you.
So you have one employee who lives within five miles of here, five minutes of here.
Correct.
One of the other, Samantha? Okay, that is really great. Are you making any efforts to recruit more people from near here?
That is a part of the conversation with some of the conversations we're having with other projects as well. So yes, we would love to.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thanks for all you do. And I'm glad this is a great partnership. The only clarification is looking at the scope of work. I know a lot of the work is focused on the site and the cleanup, but that you do connect people to services. And I wanted briefly, you could just give an example or some of the agencies that you connect people with. And what that looks like, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a both end approach. So it's property and people. And as you see, it's scoped out even the pricing kind of reflects that as well. Responses of people and property. We work with a whole slew of resources on the peninsula. So if Tricia was here, she could give you the whole, the whole list. But we've been able to partner with anyone from Kitsap, K V, so KCR.
KMH.
Yeah.
I was just going to say I could probably They're even utilizing, you know, resources from outside the county, which is where they came from to us. And we, we got the reference or referral to them from five, the chief in five. So they were doing a lot of work over there, which kind of gave us a little bit wider of a range of resources, not just in Kitsap County, which is good because, you know, we do need, we do need a little bit more robust system of resources here. So it's nice that they have stuff outside that people can take advantage of, that they're connected with. And Tricia is really the conduit to those things. She is, she's like the all knowing for that. Unfortunately, fortunately, she's on vacation. It was well deserved. But unfortunately, she's not here to really dive into that.
Like somebody gets trespassed from a property, they're basically falling through until they're in the care, until they're in the shelter and the care of another organization.
Okay. Well, that's it for me. Appreciate it.
We've had, everybody's had a cycle, right?
I just want to make something clear to the public watching.
Okay.
They, they offer services. They offer to help somebody get the shelter, but there's still people who choose not to.
Yes.
Thank you. So what I'd be curious about is how do we translate this into FTEs? I realize that it's part time, but how do we translate this to FTE, the time that's put in?
I can, I can do that. I would have to have it in front of me here and I can just
I think translating it to FTEs would be beneficial for us when we think about how much our cost differential is. Because I mean, you know, there's probably benefits and there's probably all kinds of other things that go along with hiring. So do they, do your employees have medical benefits included? Are they, or do they, tell me about the benefits that are included with your staff?
With our staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have insurance.
Okay.
And and the
Sure.
Yeah, there's, there's a hiring package we have.
Okay, are most of the, and so my curious, I think that's something that, that would be helpful for us. Not that we want to delve into your private, you know, information, but for the company, but it would be helpful to know like, oh, well, these costs. And also how much is time is being saved, you know, for the police department? So I think that also helps justify the cost. So.
I can speak a little bit on that.
Okay.
Anecdotally, I, so every time a car graph report's made, either a citizen says, hey, there's an encampment here or something here, that gets entered into carter graph, carter generates an email, it goes out to a group on the street. I get them all. Now, that's good and that's bad. I kind of know how much they're doing and I read every one of them. But the good part is, the police department doesn't respond to about, I would estimate 95% of those things. Common Streets goes to those things and does the interaction and does the outreach. And it kind of takes the police department out of it, which is good because I don't think the police department needs to be involved in those things. Until it's time for the police department to be involved, say in a trespass where they refuse to leave. Public Works really works more in concert with Common Street on the daily. You have about three or four people from Common Streets who come into Bremerton. It's not just the local person that he's talking about. There's two, two others that are coming here two, three, four times a week. In conjunction with other projects, they make it out here to kind of make it make sense. But if I often, in these conversations equate it to, if we were to stand up a city department, like a human services division, like like King County or their cities have, I don't know that you could touch it for $323,000.
Right.
Say it's two full time employees for a city doing what they do. I think you'd be well over that. It's not fine, finite numbers, but I think it would be a lot more expensive.
It's
Yeah.
If I just take your monthly estimate, multiply by 12, I get to 2,088 hours. Now, that's not, if an employee, full time employee, and that's about a full time with no leave, no whatever. So I estimate that to be really 1.5 FTE. I think that's a reasonable assumption. That's what you're getting.
1.5 FTE for 323.
Yeah, not, not when I'm speaking for Common Street, but that's what the numbers.
That's, thank you, Eric. Appreciate that. And to Eric's point about competition, there is value in the relationships that's being built. But I that's a pretty expensive FTE. Yeah, but standing in the department, I'd say that's something to consider as well. But Denise, and then was there somebody else that had another question? Michael, what did you? Okay, Denise, go right ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely agree with more just linking the financials to impact. And I think the department's been doing a great job of kind of getting that translated. But if that could be enhanced, that would be great. And then, you know, I always myself struggle with whether to bring something in-house. Because then the priorities of the house become everybody else's priorities. And sometimes it's really good to have a liaison. More of an independent type of organization. And when we talk about Common Streets, I see that happening. You know, I can, I can hear it during their presentation. And I don't know, there's got to be a way to quantify that, you know? But I, but I certainly know that there is, there is value. Perspectives change in those relationships and it's really a good thing. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, the council, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Perko, for joining us today. And Pat Melton, we always appreciate you visiting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and for arriving so early.
Oh, yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So shall we treat this as consent or general business?
Consent.
Okay, consent. Thank you. Next one, we have Public Access Manager Colleen Michael here to present item A two, Ordinance to Grant Renewal, Grant Renewal of Telecommunications Franchise with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC. Was this discussed in maybe like finance or?
It was discussed in
Public Works?
Finance.
Finance. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, do you remember that? And Finance Committee. Michael, you are the chair still, right?
Yes.
It was during the summer, Michael.
That was a while ago. Okay, okay. So it was, so nobody, does anybody remember if there was any lingering questions?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Jane, what was the lingering?
I had a question about if there was a way to tighten up Comcast's response time.
Can I ask, did you ask it at the committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, Melinda Monroe was supposed to present with me tonight, she said. But I thought that she had responded to you via email about your question.
I don't, I don't recall getting a response. I thought, I thought if I did get a response, it was, that's something we hadn't talked about yet. But we probably will.
Okay.
I, I don't recall that it was a
So I think your question about response time was relative to construction projects that was prior to do some installation or something like that.
Yeah, or, you know, move their facilities onto new poles off of old ones. Because a lot of times it slows down projects if they can't pull out the old poles because somebody's still hanging on.
Right. I don't believe that's related to this contract. I think this is specific to cable, cable franchise and not to other Comcast installations that would be related to city projects that Public Works might be.
Do you have a separate, I mean, everything comes under this franchise agreement, doesn't it?
Yeah, I've never, it's never franchise. I don't, do we have Comcast, the one that we're moving? That would be if she experienced that on her project.
We do have issues with franchises.
Okay, but I think it would be a great idea if all franchises have the same.
So let's go ahead and let Ms. Michael do her presentation.
Okay.
And then that sounds like it's a discussion that we can have at a later date to find out about the poles. Thank you so much. Please continue.
I have a couple of slides that I, that I shared in Finance Committee.
Let me
That would be helpful.
Yeah, you got it. I think I do. You should be able to share now.
You have that capacity to. Getting a little spinny thing, saying it's loading.
Okay, all right.
Hopefully it will allow me to.
It says your COHO. Are these by chance in our packet? Take a look. Not sure if they are.
They're not.
Okay. Now, yes, yay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so basically I just wanted to put this into context. That this, the BCAT is a special revenue fund. And we're specifically funded through these franchise agreements with Comcast and this down that compensate the city for Comcast's use of the right of way. And the cable franchise fees in this agreement fund our operations. And the peg equipment fee funds exclusively our video production equipment. And our primary goal through this negotiation for this agreement was to set up sustainable funding to maintain our current level of functioning into the future. And so that's just a little context. Here is our goals on the left hand side of what we are hoping to accomplish in this agreement. Comparing what the current agreement says versus the new agreement. And currently, the franchise fee is 3.5%. And this new agreement is 5%. So that's a wonderful increase. That is the maximum that's allowed. The peg fee, which I mentioned, funds exclusively our cable equipment. Our video equipment currently is 25 cents a cable subscriber. And the new contract will be 0.8% of gross revenue. The other goal that we had was we have a lot of analog feeds from our remote locations to BCAT. For instance, the other government agencies that we present their meetings live on our channel. The current agreement is really rigid and it's not digital. So the new agreement allows for upgrades to have those feeds be digital, which will make it possible for us to have the BCAT channel in HD going forward, which is huge. So this contract also will allow us to, on request, if we have the capacity and the desire to have an additional channel, additional peg channel on cast, which is wonderful. And as I mentioned before, digital upgrades are made to the equipment. This contract also will give us a high definition channel, which has been a long time in the coming. And will make the viewer experience, as you can imagine, for a BCAT viewer and citizen much more enjoyable. And the customer service standards have been substantially updated in this contract too. So that's, those are the goals and we feel good about what we accomplished in this negotiation.
Okay, so we'll go, Mike, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. And Eric, go right ahead.
Yeah, so this is all starting to come back to me. I think it was last year, we gave, the council gave the okay to hire a consultant to negotiate.
Yes, it's been, it's been more than that now, but yes, we hired River Oaks to do that.
Yeah, that's right. So I assume they were heavily involved in the negotiation or telling you what you needed to negotiate for.
Absolutely. They were very much involved as part of our team.
So just to go along boring contract. You obviously are happy with provisions that are in this contract. And it meets the objectives that you put up there. Did you basically get everything the consultant said you should ask for?
The consultant did a needs ascertainment with the community that was pretty involved. And yes, we have this contract that fills what, what the community said that they wanted and what
Because it's for the next 10 years.
Sir.
So you're good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Jane?
So did they only do that with existing customers?
It went out to the entire community, whether people were Comcast customers or not.
No. I didn't get anything.
I didn't get anything. But I'm not, I'm Xfinity. I'm not Comcast. So I don't know if they just sent it.
Comcast is Xfinity.
I don't have television.
Well, I have Comcast, but I have Xfinity and I did not get anything.
Yeah.
This was two and a half years ago that all of this happened. These surveys and stuff like that.
I was washing my hair. That was mid pandemic, right?
So all these increases that we got, does that mean public's bills are going to go up accordingly?
The peg fee had been 25 cents per cable subscriber on their cable bill. And they will still have that peg fee, but it will be 0.8% of gross revenue. And what we can estimate for the change is that about, let's say the person's cable bill is $100, that that would be 80 cents on their bill as opposed to 25 cents.
And that would be the only, only change?
Well.
Based on the ramifications of our contract?
Yes, well, the cable companies pass along their fees to their customers, obviously, but so there will be potential for that.
Okay.
So if I, is everybody, the fire alarms were in the building, right? No. Okay, all right. Denise has her hand up.
Yeah, I, I liked the question that Eric asked and I, I'm hoping that I can't really read body language there that, you know, that needs are being met. And I should think that this council is really proud that we have focused at least some energy, some financial investment in this because this is public access. You know, I know there are a lot of other ways to see what's going on. But BCAT shoulders quite a bit of that and they make some other cool, really educational, what's going on, all that. I, you can tell, been a supporter, always will be a supporter. And I'm Um, and I'm, I'm thrilled to see that, uh, you know, it's, it's getting what it needs at least for now.
Yeah.
How many subscribers there are?
I don't, I don't have that information. It's not provided on our current recording from the podcast.
Okay.
So Comcast and Xfinity just does internet. So I have internet, it's not a Comcast, so.
Jeff, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just checking in to see if it was. Okay.
So that, yeah, cause if I do, if I do the math right on the peg feed and that's like forty-seven and a half K a year. So I don't know if there's ten thousand subscribers in the city, then that sounds like we're going from twenty-five hundred to forty-seven thousand in the peg fees, which is a lot more money for BCAT, but.
I think there's, uh, a lot fewer subscribers than that.
Okay. I'm the only question.
So many people are on the internet now, watch streaming services.
Yeah, this is only for TV subscribers, yeah.
Exactly. Um, any other questions, council? Okay, Anna.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, hi.
Hi.
Are you guys, um, working in any way with, uh, KPUD, the Kids Have Public Utility District? Cause I know they're trying to expand the, the network of fiber optics. Is that something they could replace cables? Pardon my ignorance.
I, at BCAT, do not work with KPUD and I don't know what plans the city has for working with APUD for fiber access. Um, I'm familiar only with, with this franchise and how it relates to the cable systems, um, and, and BCAT.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, Council of Jeff, right, oh, uh, Tom has his hand up, so gonna go ahead and defer.
That's a, well, like, question that Public Works hasn't reviewed this, but I'm, I'm guessing the discussion of obviously right of ways in this contract, but I just wanna make sure, are there any major changes to our previous franchise agreement regarding how it interacts with Public Works and?
No.
Okay. Another question, alright.
No, the major changes were related to, on the public access channel. Um. We mentioned that, um, the, um, video feeds, that was a part that was substantially altered. Um, so for instance, um, nine point six, um, was one that we worked very carefully on. That's the part that has all the mention of the additional channel, the HD channel, um, the cable feeds.
Okay. The section ten with all the, right, uh, right, use of the right of way in construction, isn't, no significant difference?
I don't believe so. I don't remember there being.
No, no. Okay, cool.
There's more language on this on ten point six, the letter A.
Yeah, just above.
Yeah.
Okay. Right.
Counselors, should we treat this?
Concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. Have a wonderful evening. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And for kind of pulling double duty here, so.
Yeah.
Alright, next up, we have item A three, civil engineer Chris Demmett, uh, is here to present on the local agency contract with the Santee, the Cante, the Cante Inc. for the Sixth Street Phase Three Pavement Preservation Project, Public Works Chair. Was this discussed specifically? Um, okay, do you have any, were there, uh, any committee outstanding questions? What was the, and the recommendation was?
Well, they didn't.
From the public work committee?
I don't think they had the bids open, but when we had our.
No.
Our meeting, so.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Demmett, go right ahead and present. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, bringing this, uh, item for you is, uh, pretty exciting. We've been working on this project for a couple of years now. We finally got to point where we're, uh, bringing this contract to award the, the construction for Sixth Street Phase Three, so. Um, yeah, we brought it to Public Work Committee in November, uh, but we opened bids on November fourteenth. Uh, we had a fantastic, uh, opening. We had seven bids, a lot of interest. Uh, the lowest responsive bidder was the Cante, uh, with their bid coming in at three million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-two cents, uh, which was underneath our engineer's estimate by nearly a hundred and sixty thousand, so that was also very, very. And it's also within our budget for the project. Uh, and so, yeah, so, um, we're recommending that, um, you know, award to this contractor. Um, the only change to the agenda bill was, uh, we did receive interference on livestock from the state uh, just yesterday, so that's the only update to the agenda bill language.
Great.
So be happy to answer any questions that.
Thank you, Jane. I'll start with you.
Um, no, no additional questions.
Okay, Jeff?
Thanks. Remind me of the timeline of this expected to go forward. I did actually do work, do the work.
To do the work, um, so we'll award the contract and then we'll go sign the contract with the contractor. There's some preliminary reconstruction meetings and other documents they have sent to us before they can, we have to notice deed, but we expect that to happen in mid to late May.
Okay, and I'm probably, otherwise looking at summer or.
Uh, they'll probably get started right away with the facility work. Uh, we'll be putting out notices of people who are, we've already put out multiple notices over the course of, uh, the design process, but we'll be putting out another notice so people on the board, they know that.
Thank you, Denise. Do you have any questions?
I think you understand, Chris, and everybody, that it's like a domino for all of us. You know, when we discuss one project, we're wondering about impact on another. I'm sure you do that all the time. Um, you know, so I'm wondering, uh, is there anything that we need to catch the council up about timing or whatever that we should be prepared for?
I mean, in, in reference to what? I think I can jump in that, uh, cause we're talking, we've talked recently in Public Works, the question of how this ties into the Sixth Street, uh, wall project and.
Yeah, Jeff, you know what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, well, I got you, yeah. And I think the, the discussion was that this is all for, essentially for compatible, right? That word, yeah, so. Repaving's going in place and then it's, uh, it's all for compatible, the Sixth Street project.
It's for compatible. We designed the signal to be for compatible with, uh, it has need to adjust to accommodate for the bike lanes or the canalization shifts. All the markings will be in paint with the exception of the crosswalk bars, those would be going in thermal plastic because of, uh, those aren't changing. Uh, so, yeah.
Thank you for that. It was forward compatible. Thanks.
Counselors, any other questions? Cause I know you're, you have first round. Let me see if anybody else has another question. Uh, Anna, and then Jane.
Thanks. Um, so just, I'd like to hear this for the third time. Um, first off, congratulations. I've been here in about Sixth Street, like, at least since twenty eighteen. I'm sure you guys are as happy as can be that we're finally moving into Phase Three. Um, I'm specifically asking about the vehicle detection systems and traffic signals and ADA ramps because the plan for the road diet um, includes right-of-way purchase and right-hand turns. So are they going to be set up for Sixth Street as it is now or for the plan for the road diet?
Well, if the current plan is to upgrade the ADA, well, signal at Vena, where it'll be a brand-new signal with all the curb ramps. All the cross streets will have, uh, ADA curb ramps, but if they don't meet ADA, they'll be, you know, upgraded to meet ADA. Um, as far as the other project, if they were to change something from our current design, that is, um, then they would be responsible for making that change in that project.
I'm sorry, who is they in that sentence?
The other Sixth Street project, the, the road diet project.
So, uh, the, um, the road diet and the pavement preservation people have already talked?
No. No, there's, there's gonna be changes.
Okay, so we're putting in concrete and, and infrastructure that we're going, that we are quite likely going to have to take out soon? Is that correct?
Yeah, the answer to that is no. We have, uh, turnpockets proposed on the Sixth Street active at Warren Avenue, uh, and up at Naval, and that's still being discussed. I'm not quite sure exactly how that's gonna work out with the discussions that are happening, but uh, this work is from Naval to, to Warren. Um, but all the cross streets from Naval to Warren are what we're gonna work on as part of this project. Um, and we're not tou- touching the intersection of Naval, uh, and, uh, we have a little bit of work out of Warren Avenue that shouldn't impact that right turn. Um, you know, that's proposed as part of the active transportation.
So if the right, if the turnpockets and are, are not part of the road diet, will these traffic signals and vehicle detection systems, um, still work?
Yes, so the only signal they're bringing in is that Vena. We're not proposing a turnpocket at Vena, uh, for the active transportation project and, uh, the wiring.
So it's not including the signals at Naval or at Warren? Okay.
This project is.
Alright, Jane?
I just wanna make it clear to the public that this is not the bike lane project. This is just the, the repaving and the things that are going underground.
Thank you.
So one thing, one question I do have though, um, were all the conduits already checked so that, uh, like for the hawk light, so that you don't have to rip anything up later on?
Uh, for the hawk, it, it should be brand-new conduit and they'd just be pulling out, um, if they're upgrading or putting any, um, I think the only thing we're doing with that signal is we're putting, uh, the street signs, that would eliminate street signs.
Okay.
That would be the only change.
Okay.
We just, we just, that's, uh, we, so machine, it's fairly new, it has, uh, proper capacity for conduits, uh, at the.
Okay.
Alright, Michael?
Well, Jane, Karen, it's actually, um, it's, uh, this is really just a resurfacing, you know, a pavement restoration project. And with all the interest in rechanalization and bike lanes and things like that, Public Works has accommodated to not spend money where we might end up having to redo things, which is why they're going to make things like that. But it is two separate projects, different project managers. Um, so, but, I mean, they're working together with a reason, but design's not done for the full Sixth Street rechanalization, so. Some of that stuff, we just have to cross, we'll cross it.
Let's go ahead on some of that. The, you're talking about Public Works, the conduit that's being put in place, so if, if there ends up being a separate red-green bike light, like there is at Washington Avenue right now, but that, the infrastructure's in place. So they're putting it in place with their repair projects that we could use it needed.
Oh, good, okay. So, council, should we treat this as, um, consent or general business?
Consent.
Consent, agree. Thank you very much, Mr. Powell.
Consent and congratulations.
So as I'm looking here at our items, uh, I'm gonna call a break after we get done with item A eight. We'll take a short break, so let's, uh, go on to number, to A four. So we have project manager, uh, David Powell, here to present item A four, professional services agreement with Kennedy Jinks for the Tracy and Beach Roads Sewer Improvements Project. So Jane, was this discussed in committee?
Yes.
Okay, were there any lingering questions?
No.
Okay, and the general recommendation was? Head nod?
Go forward.
Go forward and prosper. Okay, Mr. Powell, thank you. You're up.
Thank you. Evening. Um, as you said, this is the professional services contract between the Jinks engineers for the Tracy and Beach Roads Sewer Improvement Project. This sewer has been a headache for operations maintenance for years. It's been very expensive, it's a dangerous operation that they, um, have to endure weekly, basically to clean this sewer. This project will solve that, that issue. We have the two pump stations, slip line and existing pipelines, we're gonna refocus existing pipeline and Tracy and Beach Road. It'll increase the velocity for the sewer and, uh, so that one M will go back out there and be, you know, cleaning this sewer. It's been a while, uh, in the process of negotiating with this consultant. We've gone through multiple iterations with them, uh, to refine the scope and that's why it's taken so long to do here. Um, we started, you know, upwards of nine hundred thousand dollars to design this project, now, you know, we're mid-seven, so. Uh, we think it's a, a good scope, uh, work, and we'll define, and, um, the recognition is to finalize the, 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 and go forward with the, uh, the contract. What we would do is, uh, start design probably in January or February and then design through the winter, um, and likely build this project next summer if possible. Uh, with about a, uh, twelve months, uh, instruction, uh, period. And with that, that's, that's it. For me, the consultant is gonna do the final design, also, you know, handle the environmental process for us. And so we've got, uh, we think all the, all the coverage is funded through, through, through technology. So there are certain, you know, requirements associated with that one, we're well committed with, and we've incorporated those requirements into the contract.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. So the, we'll go Jane, Jeff, Denise for order of questions. Jane, you're up first.
I think I asked this at Public Works, but I don't remember the answer. These projects, these neighborhoods that we're serving, are they within city limits?
Part of it's within the county.
Part of it's within the county, so that looks like it's.
Right.
Brian, Brian.
My area.
Okay.
We have it within the county. We talked to them about the project and with the requirement, but, or, that portion, it's, it's part of the city.
But to make it clear to the public, they pay one and a half times the sewer rate, correct?
I'd be paying five million. You know, I need.
Jeff, or, Jane, do you have any more questions?
No.
Jeff? I'm sorry, you just said something's gonna be married. Denise, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, other counselors? Anna, and then Eric.
Okay, um, the city of Birmingham, that was my question. Um, when was this line installed?
Back in the eighties, I believe.
Okay, and was it originally intended to serve as many people as it now serves?
Uh, yes, and the project that we have currently also, and it's based in growth north of this sewer line. So we, in our planning document, um, it includes all of that potential area too, so. Um, like you heard, forward compatible with this project before, the panel was featured along north of the public site.
Okay, um, just because five million bucks is a, is a chunk of money to.
It's a lot of money. We, we're gonna try and increment that significantly because we are, you know, repurposing the existing pipeline. Um, we're just gonna slip line that, that.
The CIPP?
It's HTP, six inch.
Okay, um, yeah, just because it's odd that something so comparatively new would have, not have a sufficient flow rate. I know it's a really constrained area.
Crappy design.
Yeah, so.
Crappy, no pun intended.
Like, there was gravity back then, right? Just like there is now?
This is never, this is, five things never operated.
Right.
It's got, it's a, it's got negative grade in it.
I'm sorry?
Negative grade.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm just surprised, yeah. Where the water's supposed to just, the fluid's supposed to just go uphill for a little while?
Well, if you have a big enough flow, it will.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem, the velocities are so low that it's, it's settle out in, but it's basically, it's a four thousand foot long septic tank. So, it just doesn't, well, it's a force it.
And this, this is germane to the specific contract, which is, um, was there any way that we could, um, talk to the people who, uh, originally installed it and get some money back?
Yeah, it's, you're, you're way beyond my.
Okay. Okay.
The eighties are only twenty years ago.
Yeah, the Public Works, uh, folks back there laughing at that idea. Oh, they kinda like that, but.
Get money back from.
Crazy idea. Um, okay. I, I, I'm still kinda staggered by the installation of a sewer line with negative grade, but thank you very much, Mr. Powell.
Eric?
I'm trying to think which council members were here in nineteen eighty.
Okay.
On the planet.
Any are still.
Nineteen eighty. Take a look, I do have a list.
So my my question is germane as well. It has to do with the lift stations. I'm looking at your your map. Towards the end there. Have you already secured the right of way for these lift stations?
We haven't secured right away, but we have identified the properties and spoken with the property owners. And they are willing to negotiate with us for the location of these two pump stations.
Okay, so they're not fighting you because I'd hate to go through a design and then find out we got a legal challenge as far as location, because it's not necessarily desirable to have a pump station on your property. I'm speaking from experience, so just don't even question that unless you want to have a long. I'm just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We identified six properties.
Yeah.
And contacted, we were successful in contacting five. Some did, you know, say they didn't want a pump station on the property. These two particular ones. The location of the pump station is pretty far away from the residences around the corner, so to speak. Part of the contract is to include a landscape architect to design these pump stations so they're basically, you know, invisible as much as possible.
Right.
And not impact the values.
So are these going to be above ground pump stations, below ground, or a hybrid?
It's kind of a hybrid. So the pump station itself is below ground. Above ground will be an emergency generator and control panel.
Yeah.
And they're relatively small, so it should be able to hide them.
So as far as size, the traditional pump station is about, I don't know, fourteen by fourteen square. Are these smaller since it's just one sewer line?
These will be likely eight foot diameter and refurbished, pump station, just dig out, pop them in.
But you said diameter, so it's not going to be a big square building.
Be around, around.
Okay, these are much smaller.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Flat.
I can see your point. They won't be as intrusive as the ones that we traditionally.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We put an ADU on top of it?
Every property unit is a SPO. And so that's a concern that we're going to address with other control and each one of the facilities. But also include a water, you know, wa- a water line basically to. The seasons, these pump stations will run, you know, more in some seasons than others. You don't want the sewers to sit there for a long time. So we may add a little bit of water to keep the pumps, you know, running and keep the sewage flowing, not like sit there and accept it.
I hope it's a separate water line.
It'll have a.
Oh, I know it is. I I'm being sarcastic. I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Yeah, council, any other questions? Okay. So this is my district. This is a very sensitive area. So it'll be interesting to see. I'm curious to see what their outreach plan is going to be, but I don't have any further questions regarding this particular contract. Shall we treat this as consent or, okay, very much, Mr. Powell? All right, you are welcome. Next up, we have item A five, engineering project manager Vicky Grover here to present supplemental agreement number four with HDR Engineering, Inc. for Naval Avenue. First Street to Fifteenth Street pedestrian and bicycle enhancement projects. A public work, so this is perhaps discussion year committee.
Is this the right of way?
September? It was before Jane, so it was with Anna?
No.
Evil contract.
It's a contract for right.
Oh, this year, September.
Okay. It was discussed, but the plan wasn't put on the website until October.
Okay.
So it's still unclear to me how many properties you just need a right of entry to and how many you're actually purchasing right of way. And where would I find that information?
Are you prepared to discuss that in your presentation? Great, okay, I'll let you proceed with your presentation. Were there any other lingering questions from the, from this item other than the properties?
Well, I'll listen to her presentation and I know some more questions.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Grover, to write ahead.
Thank you, and good evening, council. So it is an exciting time that we're moving into the new phase for naval.
Yes.
And so tonight, I am here to ask a council to vote to award a consultant contract to HDR, who is also the contractor, I'm sorry, consultant, who also did the design for us, but has a specialty when it comes to real estate services, which is really what this is about for this space. There's federal funds involved. This is the Uniform Relocation Act that we'll be following. It's very strict, laborious, it's very well written, though. So this contract that we're asking for for tonight is about one point four six million dollars. And it will be supplement for to an original contract that the city entered into in the December of twenty nineteen, beginning of January twenty twenty. There have been various supplements, obviously in between to get us to number four. But this contract dollar amount is strictly for the right of way acquisition purchases as well as for the consultant. And so Jane, let me tell you, so currently where we're at is, so along that corridor, the very long corridor from First Avenue or the gate the shipyards there to fifteen. So we're looking right now for about eighty one temporary construction easements along the corridor. And we're looking at about thirty eight properties for permanent property acquisition. And in the set of the ninety percent, there are, there is a section of right of way plans in the plan set.
Well, let me go, let me go look at those plans again because I thought they, when I looked down on them before, they were really difficult to read. You're up. Can you tell me what what page numbers of that plan?
If you go to the very front, Jane, the patient plan stat.
Well, do you have that attached to this?
No, it's on.
Okay, well, let me go back.
There's no need to whisper. Everything's public here. While you're looking for that, I'm looking at task thirteen, Real Estate Services, which says identifies eighty three parcels for acquisition. So that's different from either of the numbers you just gave us.
Here's what I'm going to tell you. They tend to put everything into acquisition, whether it's temporary. That's something I learned along the way.
It's still different from either of the numbers you just gave us.
Yeah, and you know what? It it could be because they have added some on since they put the scope of work together. But that that number can fluctuate.
Can we pause? Because I am deferring to Public Works committee members first.
Fair enough.
And then Jane, do you want to take a pause and pass to another member?
Yeah, because I'm waiting for the Naval Avenue.
Sure, Jeff.
To upload.
You have questions?
Sure, I know it's back in September, we discussed this. The, Vicky, can you walk through the kind of the high level of this project and the public meetings to date and when the ninety percent design came out and what was before that?
And then I'm going to defer to Denise. I I believe that we received the ninety percent plans from HDR beginning of the summer. We reviewed, it took us a little while to get through the plans, and I believe we wrapped up the city review of the ninety percent in September. We've sent comments back to them. And and so that's where we're at, waiting for them to address those. And then as far, I'm sorry, you asked about the public outreach?
Yeah, I think there was an open house, one open house at some point, is that right?
It was an online open house.
So there was, this was during COVID, so the first virtual open online, open online house, online open house was on June twenty sixth of twenty twenty. The SAG, which is a stakeholder meeting, was on October fifth, twenty twenty.
Who do you consider stakeholders?
Oh, see, unfortunately, I wasn't involved. Who was part of the stakeholder, which ain't.
I do have questions. So I have the list here. So hang on to your hats. So we had a member of the vice president, and I personally was included in that. We had ABP, the school, that are two schools there. Kids have transit. We had one council member, one that still sits on this council invited. We had Squon's Tribe, Bemerton Chamber of Commerce. Kids have community health and our emergency services, both the police and fire, were invited to the stakeholder advisory meetings.
Okay, I'm going to have a question about that later, but.
Jeff, you still on the floor?
Yeah.
I have more. I have more. The second SAG meeting was in November, in November fifth of twenty twenty one. And then we had a second online open house in October tenth of twenty twenty two.
Okay.
But on your website, it says you're.
I need to reinforce, I need to reinforce. I want to make sure that Jeff has his time.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. And if you want to give Jane the head nod, like, make sure I know that's okay, too.
No, it's fine. No, that's good.
Head nod both the right word, but I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so we, so the I think reading some of the public comments, the, there's a little bit of heartburn of people adjusting the ninety percent plans, which had changes. And so there's kind of, people wanted to look at that. We've had a lot of discussion on Sixth, and we're talking policy for bike lanes. I think that's the, that's the heartburn we're seeing. I think I'm having a hard time adjusting, and the eighty something parcels of which pieces of this the right of way is needed for. I'm just having a hard time adjusting it, to be honest. So it's in, I didn't realize that there's in the ninety percent plans here. What's on the website is the full ninety percent engineering document plans, which is, which is fantastic to put out there so that down the road, nobody can can say, you know, they didn't know if something was off. But it's, but besides that, there's just the preliminary design exhibit. So I don't know, is there, is there a way to get a graphic that shows the major, the major changes proposed?
Very.
Because the preliminary design exhibit doesn't seem to have the the changes to eleventh to fifteenth that went on the ninety percent design and and show a bit of what the right of way is being being used for.
Yeah, so I guess the answer is yes, we can do that, but our consultant is waiting for this to improve so that we can get work on that exhibit. Or else we would have had it up to our end, but the major change that we had on on this board over is the eleventh to fifteenth. When we held our public outreach a couple of years ago, that was the major comment that we heard, to say, you know, that's, you know, can you extend bike lanes from eleven to fifteenth? And that was the the biggest change between sixty percent and the ninety percent that you see on there. That would be.
Okay.
Everything else, you know, south of Eleventh Street is basically pretty much the same. It has been for a couple of years.
No.
All right, Jeff, do you still have the floor?
Yeah, I'll defer for now.
Okay. I don't see Denise on, but I'll I'll trust that if she has a question, she would have raised her hand. Anna, go right ahead.
Jane, you're done?
Well, Jane doesn't have the floor.
Have the floor.
Great, so you're welcome to defer to her if you'd like to, but.
How the parcels that you just described, is that written down somewhere? Like those figures, can you repeat them and so I can write them down?
Yes, and I can repeat them again, but they will change just so you know. We have a starting point. Things can change depending on negotiation. This is, this is the best of our knowledge at this point. So we, we, there's going to be about eighty one properties along the corridor temporary, some TCEs and about thirty eight, and sometimes they're both. Sometimes it's a permanent and a temporary on the same.
So over a hundred and ten parcels? That include temporary and permanent?
Yep.
Okay, so this constant repetition of eighty three in the packet in front of me has nothing to do with that.
Well, in the eighty three, again, could be just because they're counting the parcel one time for temporary and permanent. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
No.
And I divided mine up.
Some are going to be temporary, some are going to be permanent.
When we have a parcel, you know, a property owner parcel, there are certain instances where you're getting two instruments from you. You may get a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement on top of that. And so those are two separate instruments. And depending on what number you look at, you could be looking at a count of everything aggregated, or you could be looking at each property owner for where we're getting an easement or an acquisition.
So we won't know the cost of the combined temporary and permanent right of way acquisition until the project is, what, at a hundred percent completed?
We, we have an estimate. Washdod approves all of this, so we have an estimate of right of way costs acquisitions that include permanent and temporary that have been approved with contingency included with Washdod. But but that, yes, those can change. It's based on negotiation. So we come in with a fair market value. And maybe people take it, maybe they don't, so that it it can move, but we have an estimate. Yes, we do.
Okay, and how many of those parcels are, need to be acquired because of turn new right hand, blah blah, new turnpockets?
That I can't answer. I mean, I could by looking. I don't know the answer.
Not very many. I don't know the exact number on top of mine. It's not very many. We can get that for you if you'd like.
Why are they needed?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Why are the turnpockets needed?
This this project, you know, when we designed it a couple of years ago, it's been in play for
Yes.
five years.
Yes, I know.
And the product that you have, the design that you have incorporates all, you know, our our requirements, our city of Bemerton standards, all the, you know, our local requirements and standards. It includes state and federal, and that's the way this project was designed. And the right turnpockets were, were to meet our city policies for levels of service. So that's a policy that are part of the policy, compliant with the growth management. And so we don't get to pick and choose whether or not we follow it. We followed it.
So the level of service is, comes directly from the requirement for city of Bemerton to comply with the Growth Management Act?
Nope, we can change it.
Yes, but but it is, it is part of the comprehensive plan, maybe sixteen comprehensive plans.
So yes.
Yes.
The level of service is required by the state of Washington's Growth Management Act. That's what you're saying to me?
Yes.
I, I, I'd like to follow up on that soon, but I'm just gonna, because I feel Jane's going to follow the heck up on it.
Can I?
In this contract, there's removal of trees and replacement of sidewalk. Is there going to be replanting of trees at any point along Naval Avenue between First and Fifteen?
I was going to say, I think it depends on where, so I know along the cemetery we'll put.
Yeah, yeah, we're replacing trees along the cemetery and cemetery frontage.
You're taking them out and then replacing them?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
We we've had to realign that segment of street, and because of that, we've had to take out trees and we'll have to put them back in.
But south of Eleventh, are there plans to put in any street trees?
There's not a lot of opportunity for us to put the street trees to the south. And so we took a look at that and, you know, there's, you know, the sidewalks and the narrow right of way right in through there. We're putting sidewalk right at the right of way limit, and there's not a lot of areas for us putting street trees down to the south between First and.
And that isn't our policy? To increase urban tree canopy?
Our policy is to provide street trees and landscaping and look for possibilities that in our capital projects on our two streets. And we took a look at doing that as part of this project, but, you know, the opportunity, because we're, we're.
Can I just verify that this tree removal is part of this?
Task twelve.
Task twelve, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, please continue.
Yeah, so that's specific for the cemetery because we need to put those trees.
Okay. Yeah, just thank you for doing all of this. Thank you for doing all of this, um. The primary purpose of this is to make this strip of three multimodal, is that correct? That's why we're doing it? It's not pavement preservation, it's not replacing a sewer line. The primary purpose is to increase mu- multimodal along this stretch. Is that correct? Okay, thank you, no more questions.
Eric or Michael, do you have questions?
So I, I see lots of emails floating around, Shane, I'm sure you can see C dot. So, wh- what we have before us tonight is. Is a contract to get going with the right of way. Is it possible? That, uh, majority of the project is non-controversial at this point, and right of ways could be worked on that while this other stuff is. Is, uh, vetted out, these other concerns are answered, is that a possibility?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm not understanding what the concerns are to be able to answer that. I think there's a lot we can do on this project. I mean, what, what I've heard, and, or, or correct me if, if there's something different, but is there's a sensitivity to protected bike lanes. And turn pockets is really what I'm hearing, um, and, um, I think that. The majority of this work that we're doing as part of this contract can be done, uh, if there's a question about those pieces of the design.
That's my point, to get this thing to keep going forward, but still taking concerns that are community members that are writing in. Are coming before our council, their voices should be heard and the questions should be. Whether they like the answer in the end, I think the administration needs to come up with answers to their concerns. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Knight.
Did, did council see the email that was sent earlier today?
No.
No, I'm sorry.
Sent an email response to, uh, the email that came from the citizen earlier today. And, um, I, uh, I'll check before, make sure you get it, you should read it, I think you should.
What time did you send it? What time?
Three o'clock. And I looked at my email, usually I get those, you know, when they go to council and copy it on that, I didn't see that. I think you should read it.
Let me, uh, check in my staff and see if they can forward it to us.
Just a question, but, I mean, if you're asking to reopen design, which it sounds like you're asking to reopen design. So we set the, um, this, the overall scope of project, typically somewhere thirty-ish percent design. We're at ninety percent. We've been at sixty percent design for over two years. Those plans, the sixty percent design plans have been on the city's website for two and a half years. And now, if you, if you decide that you want to reopen design, I don't, I can't tell you what the impacts are, it can be staffing for budget. I have my idea.
Sure.
So I think we, we tread cautiously on that.
Yeah, so, I, again, I'm a layman here, okay, so. What is the other ten percent cover? If we're at ninety percent, well, not a hundred percent, what is the ten percent cover?
So the ten percent, uh, so when it goes through a significant right of way phase like this, we are dealing property owners that, um, take a look at. How we're doing things in front of their properties, and they say, hey, I want you to do this, or you, you know, instead of what you have in the plan, can you change it up? Put a wall here or a walkway here, although there's a certain amount of design effort, particularly with this, uh, uh, property owners that we're dealing with. That we're gonna need to, uh, to finalize, uh, within, in order to finalize the entire contract. So there will be some changes, uh, due to that, and that's what this is intended to cover.
All right, so what I'm getting, Mr., thank you, Mr. Webber, so what I'm getting from you, Mr. Nucky, without having read the letters, basically. You gotta stick with the design that we have with the turn pockets as, as planned and not, not, I, I'm just seeing the emails floating. And I'm not a subject matter expert, I'm not questioning your guys' design either. All I'm saying is, I, I'm getting. We get people talking, and we get people sending in letters, and I just want to be comfortable in that their concerns have been answered. Whether they like the answer or not, their concerns have been answered, and then me as a layperson say, okay. Yeah, I, I can see why the city did it this way, not questioning you, I just want to make sure I understand. And if it's because of requirement X, Y, Z, we have to have turn pockets, fine, I can live with that, I understand that. So are, are you telling me, Mr. Nucky, that basically? The turn pockets, which I guess everybody's all upset about, those aren't open to changing because we're at ninety percent?
I'm saying that if we want to go back and redesign the project, we're gonna have costs that we can't quantify, right?
Okay.
Um, we, uh, it, it, I, and I, I don't manage the project, I can't tell you what all took place on, you know, between the sixty percent and the ninety percent. But, um, you know, we, we, um, deliver these projects on a linear basis. Um, we established, uh, stakeholder advisory committee. Um, I believe that we re-included, I think, the right people on the stakeholder advisory committee. I believe that we met with those people, um, at pre-designed thirty percent design and sixty percent design. We took their comments, we modified our scope based on their comments, um, we worked on the project. Uh, and brought it to a ninety percent design, and now we're at a point to move forward with the right of way phase. So if you want to go back and rethink design decisions, I can't tell you what the impacts are, but we don't have budget for that. Yeah, so we have to, um, find whatever that amount of money is, and then figure out the finance that, and then see what the other project impacts are. And how that impacts other projects.
Yeah, no worries, I can tell this is a very sensitive thing, I, I understand, I understand, I'm, it's all good. So getting back to my original question, we approve this next week. Uh, would the city be looking more at the low hanging fruit, the part that wouldn't change no matter what, and start looking? Cause they're not gonna do all eighty properties at once, they don't have the staff to do that. Would that be a reasonable, uh, approach? To do the ones that are not controversial?
Intersections.
We, it'd still be hard to quantify.
Yeah, well, so the, the, the turn pockets, does that make sense? I mean, a- again, not a subject matter expert here, and I'm not trying to tell you how to do your job, I'm just trying to reach a compromise here. So, you, you gotta count the votes in the room. And, uh, you want this thing to keep moving for- forward, I'm trying to get you an avenue to keep it moving forward, so.
There are going to be some properties, we'll get from the intersections, that'll probably be considered more controversial.
Okay.
It would, it easily can happen.
All right.
Jane, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, I'm, I'm just gonna soak this.
Okay, so based on your right of way plans.
Both that.
The great majority of these are temporary easements.
Sorry Denise, I didn't know that you told just.
They're not permanent easements, so. It's gonna take them a long time to get those temporary easements, and then. Obviously, we have to buy that property at the corner of eleventh. And Naval, where the building's built right up to. The back of the sidewalk.
It's like one, five foot there?
Now. Yeah, not even. So there's a place to can put trees.
There you go, there you go, little grove.
Yeah, um. So. I don't see a whole lot of permanent acquisitions on this plan.
Hopefully, the one G C adds up to thirty-eight, and again, that, that's where we're at, correct?
Okay. Are some of, are, when you do these temporary easements, and I can see where a lot of them are for driveways. Where you're gonna be blending.
Yes.
Back sidewalks.
Yeah.
And right up against.
So if we get our forms in there for the sidewalk.
So, the sidewalks, are they staying in the same place and just being replaced, or are they moving?
Some locations, they're staying in the same.
But we've, we've decided that even though they're staying in the same place, that we have to rip out and reforcate?
Widening, uh, the sidewalks in, uh, a lot of locations, uh, on this project than, uh, existing, and then there's, uh. Uh, locations like, for example, eleven, um, uh, north of eleven, where we don't have a sidewalk, they were putting a new sidewalk.
Right.
And where the sidewalk doesn't meet current city standards, um, you know, a big.
Oh, for crosswalk and stuff, okay.
Yeah, for ADA crossload, uh, you know, a big conversation that happened when we did our public outreach a couple of years ago, and we talked. You know, bike lanes, we talked through sidewalks, and the big push there was to ensure that there's wider sidewalks out here in this quarter or not. You know, the bike lane design was fine back then, and it was generally accepted, and, um, but the, the big concern. Was ensuring that we had wide sidewalks, uh, and that was, you know, um, the big conversation a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Because sidewalks through the corridor were very.
I mean, it is a pedestrian and bicycle project, so, I mean, that makes sense to me.
So we.
So, so I think. Quite a few of the comments we got from the public is, I, I think they're under the impression. That we were purchasing a lot of properties versus just temporary construction easements. And so, you know, what it shows here, I'm guessing you're, you're taking five feet. Beyond wherever you're working, so you comes in and, and reseed and all that.
Hopefully you will listen now, but yeah, we try to take as minimal amount as we can.
And we don't pay for temporary construction easement?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, we're required to, because it's federal bonds. And there's a pretty strict process we need to follow with property.
And is that just based on square foot when it's a temporary?
Yeah, it, it is, uh, based on the square footage, based on.
Okay.
That's where the real estate service is coming to us, to make sure we're paying fair market.
Jane, I'm, I want to let Denise have a turn, is this a good time to give her a turn? She hasn't had one yet, okay, Denise, go right ahead.
Thank you. I don't want to underestimate, uh, the community's desire and focus on protected bike lanes. And I say that as someone who first started looking at Sixth Street as, oh, wait, that's where tourism comes in. And, you know, people need to get down there in cars, and, um, I think that area is evolving. And I really hope that this process is gonna allow us to get something in there. That lasts and provides the infrastructure we need for what we're seeing as the future, the evolution of, of Sixth Street. And, um, if we mess it up, that's gonna really keep us in the wrong lane, uh, no pun intended. Uh, for a while, uh, but if we truly want to have a, a safe. And, uh, effective multimodal, uh, uh, route, uh, through Birmerton. This would be a great one to focus on, and I know there's businesses, and I, you know, I know all of that.
Miss, uh, Denise, hold on, just one more point of information, Anna?
This is about Naval, yeah, but it's crossing six.
Okay, yes, yes.
We're just talking about that one.
All right.
Thank you.
So it's all, it's, it's, it's all connected.
Do you have questions for Ms. Grover?
No, I don't, except thank you, Vicky.
Great, uh, council, it sounds like we have a lot of discussions still left on this, I'm wondering if we can put this on general business, or if we wanted to defer this to another study session?
I think it needs to be on general business.
I think another study session is a great.
General business, another study session, what do y'all think?
We have an in-person public works meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
We're gonna be talking about a lot of bicycle related things and Sixth Street, and so.
In this.
This one, I think we can discuss this more there, and as I say, from, yeah, from my. I, I think it's worth just staring at this a little more, and I wanna, the, just the emails and director's response, and maybe, maybe on the public works meeting. Either, well, off of the recommendation, or, or to, or leave it on general for now, and.
Be nice to, it sounds like there's some more, some more digestion needs to be done, cause some of the information was provided after the last public works. Meeting when this was on the agenda, is that what I'm understanding? Okay, so more was, um, more was revealed between your last meeting and today. Um, uh, can y'all talk to me about the, um, timeline that you need in order to process this contract? And, uh, to get things rolling, like what? What does putting it off for another couple of weeks, or actually another month do for your timeline? It's another month, cause it's our last study session of the year. We find other things to work on, she says, okay.
We, we, we don't, we won't do any work until, um, with our consult, we won't begin the right of way. I don't know what our timeframe is on the federal.
Yeah, you know, um, I think these, you know, we have, uh, we have this project. We have an environmental efforts on this project, and we have a timeline, uh, to be able to get this project, uh, under construction. Three years from last.
But we don't have any money of the, to build it, do we?
No, and that's the other thing, it was, um, in order to get money for construction on this, we need to understand where schools. Changing in scope.
So. So what I'm gonna recommend is that we put this on for the January fifteenth study session. Um, you'll have a time to go back to this in-person public works meeting, and then, I'm sorry, that's a council meeting?
That's a council meeting.
You're right, okay, the eighth is the next study session. Oh goodness, okay, that's the fifth one, that's right, okay. Um, so we, we're not meeting on the first, though, am I right?
Meeting on the second.
That's right, thank you. Oh gosh, okay, um, all right, so we're meeting on the second, um, for.
Elect officers, and that's it, that's all that's on the agenda.
Okay, all right, um, so we'll put it on for the eighth then.
Can I just ask what the, um. Where do we think we're heading? Like, we take them on, I, I know there's some more information you want to look at it further, I get that. But, um, at the end of that month, I think the decision is, yes, we're gonna move forward with the right of way phase on this ninety percent design. So we can get to the work and start negotiating easements, there's a lot of work to do. Or is it gonna be, hey, pause the right of way, uh, we want to go back to a design phase and revisit design. Um, and then we're gonna need to find design money, is that like, uh, that's kind of the two options that I see, either we're gonna move forward with this. At ninety percent the way it is, and I know that we want to consider this more, but if you, if the decision is, hey, stop. We want to go back and, um, look at the design, look at removing right turn pockets, look at protect.
So what you're asking is, one of two options, where are we going? So my understanding from the, it's okay, council. My understanding is council wants to digest some more information, there's, there's questions they have from the public, so they're gonna take time to process those questions in the next public works. If, I, I don't know if they're gonna wanna, if we're gonna want you to go back to design, it sounds like it's cost prohibitive, but as a council, what we're deciding. Is to go ahead and put this on the next study session of the new year. So you have an opportunity to discuss and digest the questions at the next public works meeting, and from there, we, we don't have an answer for you. We'll move forward with whatever we decided the council on the eighth. Respectfully, I'd like to go ahead and close this item, we have a plan, and I'd like to move on to the next one. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. Okay, next up, we have the item A six. Um, after item A eight, yeah. Next up, we have the finance director, Mike Riley, and budget analyst, Missy Gaines, here to present item A six. Ordinance to amend number. To amend ordinance number fifty-four eighty-seven, establishing city of Birmerton's fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as amended by ordinance five four nine five. It's okay, he'll be back. He won't, he'll indulge, we have a, you know. But we have our finance chair, so I'm assuming this was discussed in finance, head nod, what? That's right, okay, all right.
Next year, we're ready to dive in.
Ready for it, all right.
Ready, well, um, here it is. Passover, uh, missing games, really what we have in front of you, and she'll reiterate, very, a lot of housekeeping, ninety-nine point nine percent housekeeping. You have one item you've not approved, is in this year in budget amendment, the deal contract. Deal contract is based on bed days, bed rates, we have an adjustment for that, and all, what's coming up, the estimated remaining cost. At the end of the year, above what we have budgeted, but everything else in your packet you've seen brought to council has been approved by. So, I'll pass it over, this, I might have stole all of her language that she prepared tonight, but, uh.
He did, so, everything he just said.
So really, housekeeping, just during the budget, this is our formal act to amend the ordinance of action you've already taken throughout the second half. You've seen every item except the gel, the gel increase.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, Michael, I'll look for you first. Okay, um, and then, um, next up, well, we would go to Eric, is that here? Jane, do you have any questions next, from finance?
Yeah.
Department, okay, all right, councilors, any question?
Truly, truly just housekeeping, we're making sure all the fund balances line up and.
Do we need more money than we thought?
I spend a little bit of it at the year end, and we'll see, we'll have some savings that we'll see, this is just budget to budget.
I spend a little bit of it at the year end. We'll see. We'll have some savings that we'll see. This is just budget to budget. We will recognize some savings.
Okay, sweet.
Um, okay, I'm going back up here and you said just the jail bed date was the one that you.
We have increased costs in jail, just based on bed days and what we're trending. So working with uh Ryan Ryan Hepburn for the place department, we estimate through the rest of the year. Uh, he projected an additional half million dollars, but we needed to maintain the bed day that we're seeing in jail contract cost.
Um, is that because?
Increased costs in the jail. So just more utilization bed day.
So we have a higher incarceration rate, like at our local jail? Is that what that means? I'd like to know more information.
It's it's you're using that.
So there's more people going to jail, um, which makes sense because perhaps during COVID, more people were let out. But costs were higher during COVID due to health and safety. Health, um, do we have, and I mean.
There's not much I can present. The bill that comes from county.
Yeah.
By the contract, the contract is that build bed day. We reconcile that bed day before we do incarceration.
Okay.
And that's the projection that we have. So make sure we have enough budgets to pay for that bill.
So so if we're talking about five hundred thousand more, um, I would like to know itemized kind of like why the costs are going up. If it's if it's that we have more folks everybody going to, okay.
Not rates.
So more bed days, the more more folks are going to jail in our city. That's what that means basically, right? Okay, thank you. Um, does anybody else have any questions about this contract modification or this um budget modification?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Um, consent or general?
Consent.
All right, I'm gonna go with y'all. I still want to know more information, though. Is there any way that I can get more information on? Thank you. Thank you. I would like more. If you could send it to me personally. Thank you. I don't want to beleaguer us anymore. Um, all right, next up, it's you. Uh, it's you. Thank you very much.
Here we go.
Okay.
Great.
We have I item A seven, um, contract modification number one with Columbia Hospitality, which is why we have a whole back row of uh additional folks. Hi, gentlemen. Um, uh, for the management and operation of the Kitsap Conference Center. So this. Yep.
Okay, we'll start with that.
But you can still sit up.
Yeah, still bring him on. Bear with me.
Do we have an, oh, there it is. Okay, so Conference Center first, and then um the Gold Mountain Golf Course is second. All right.
So uh what we have burning you is the six-year contracts uh with uh renew the contract with the conference center for Columbia Hospitality as a management group. We did a full RFP process five years ago on both contracts, the conference center and our golf contract. Both contracts were awarded to Columbia Hospitality. They're here tonight. Um, Conference Center continued to operate as expected. Um, we had some uh major additions. We had the AV project, uh project as it seemed to great returns on investments. Um, really just asking counsel who they sent the process. We did last time with Lumber's response uh with the operator to to exercise the renewal, the renewal option six years. Um, I work closely with Tiffany, uh, who is our general manager of the conference center. She's not here tonight. It is her daughter's fifteenth birthday.
Oh.
Sure, please do that instead of being here. Um, she is willing and able to be at the meeting next week. If there's specifically at the conference center, but I know uh Brian Blair is here to, that has some comments about the conference that you'd like to share. Um, two things I'd like to share, uh, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, they have an event there uh with Nimitz. It is their holiday party. Fifteen hundred people will be in that facility. I would love for you, if you have time tomorrow, to walk through that conference center. It is beautiful. It's just amazing. I went there yesterday. And they've got, it's just set up for that. Even just the holiday setup to maintain that the flock tree, grapefruit and the ceiling of the conference center, the new carpeting. It 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 is a top-tier looking uh center. I'm very impressed with what they've done. Tiffany's done a fantastic job keeping us up to speed and and bringing in great events. Two of their events this year, one of their events at six hundred, they had six hundred uh bed nights. The other bit had nine hundred beds. So share that with me, and I'm sure Brian has a lot more to talk about. But that's what I have for you. Don't have a whole lot to dive into. We've been happy with our operation. We're asking to extend uh to rotate any exercises.
Thank you. Um, so I'm going to, let's see, was this um? Was this 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 was not discussed at finance at all, neither one of these, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm.
I think.
Jane, I'm gonna defer to finance first.
Early in the year, uh, we had talked about these contracts coming up.
Okay. So what I'm gonna do is go uh Michael, Eric, Jane, for questions for both items A seven and A eight. So, Michael, do you have any questions? Hey, Eric, do you have any questions on this?
Um, just looking through the contract as far as the dollar amounts, percentages, et cetera, I don't see anything mentioned. So it's the status quo.
That's what it's all.
For both.
Yes.
I I know Brian came over from uh from the the other side of the pond, so I think we need to give him an opportunity to speak.
Sure.
So I defer to him.
Uh, I'm just here to express gratitude uh on behalf of Columbia Hospitality. Uh, Mike has outlined some of the successes at Kitsap Conference Center. None of it would have been possible were we not beyond doing support about this council and the pair and the team that we work with every day. You've made some significant investments in the facility in the past two years, twenty-three and twenty-four. I highlighted some of them. Uh, those investments are making a difference and will have a long-term return. So I just wanted to express our gratitude for the many years we have been working together in Conference Center. It's almost fifteen at this point years and that golf course uh since two thousand and thirteen. Grateful for that. We're grateful for your consideration to continue that partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jane?
So it says it's a six-year contract for the Conference Center. But the city attorney only signed off for a three-year contract. And expiration of twelve thirty-one twenty-seven is in our packet. And I'm wondering why.
Well, the first is turning on.
Well.
Page two twenty-two of the PDF.
And it's nice because we, I've never seen a contract review sheet from in our council package before. I like these.
Yeah.
Especially when it's different than what.
Mona, we're closer with with legal.
So did you find it, Kylie? It's page.
She did. I didn't do the review of this one. If you, I just need to have our MRR, uh, the reviewer.
Both contracts are coming through at the same time, which all and conference center once a three year.
Oh, is it perhaps a typo?
Might have been.
The date is also specified. The date and it says the conference center. And then for the other one, it's blank. It's.
Yeah.
It's three years for anybody.
Kylie, are you supporting a six-year renewal for the conference?
Also says like not dissemination and it's in the.
I know, right?
Yeah.
It's like a work. It's like a cover sheet.
Not for public consumption. Will will you have updated documents that are briefing before the briefing that will be in the packet prior to the?
Well, I do appreciate, I mean, I'll say this out loud. I think the initial design of the conference center was really odd to not be taking advantage of a waterfront view. But I think what Columbia Hospitality is doing with it is great. I think it looks much better. A lot of people enjoy going there, so. Okay, it'll make us money. That's what we were told.
Anna, it, well, it does make the, okay, Anna, sorry, I won't.
I just wanted to express my thanks to Columbia Hospitality, um, specifically for the conference center for changing your policy on holding gun shows there at the request of council. Yeah, that was brief. Thank you. All done.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, counselors, any other questions?
Just uh, like an awful lot of kudos out here, nothing but good things, uh, experiencing something but good things. So it's a one, it's a one-time option to do a six-year renewal, and then we would go back and do another RFP six.
We could directly go, Kate. We're not required to go out to RFP, but there's that's the last.
Okay. For for both contracts or just?
Yeah, so the the exercise options were two, threes or one, six.
Okay.
So a golf contract will have an ability to send an additional three years. And again, our attention is fully aligned with both contracts. But so we'll have a, we'll have a discussion on why we're looking at three year in the golf and the six year here. And one of those reasons in the second row over here. Um, uh, new par director, uh, who oversees that contract of land. It takes about a year and a half for RFP. It is a lot of process. So it's give us a priority to get a relation, a little relationship built. I'm jumping in, sorry, but that had full intention there to see a superiority um for for our new par.
Al Donald's six week on the job now. Come on, Tim.
He did a really good job of budget, the budget presentation. So, yeah.
All right, well, uh, any other questions, Denise? No, I trust that she would. Okay, everybody good? Okay, Denise, do you have any questions? No, okay. Um, I just appreciate the conference center for how much money you do bring in to Birmerton. Maybe the conference center doesn't make money, but is responsible for a lot of the um, a lot of other e- economy in our in our city. So thank you for that. Um, consent, general?
Consent.
Consent. Okay, thank you. Next up is uh, we have our um parkster recreation director, Tim Barker. Come on, come on up. Here to present item A eight, contract modification number one with Columbia Hospitality Inc. for the management and operations of Gold Mountain Golf Course. Um, this was, this was not discussed in committee, but I'm still still gonna defer same thing. Um, Michael, Eric, Jane, then everybody else. Um, all right, go right ahead, Mr. Barker.
So thank you. As stated, uh, Columbia Hospitality is managing the golf course. Uh, the current agreement went into place in uh twenty twenty. It was a five-year agreement. And the plan was to align with the other, but then I came on board and screwed everything up.
Bah.
Gotta do something, shake things up like that. So um, we did talk about this and we have had conversations with Columbia Hospitality and they were more than willing to look at a three-year agreement. Uh, this obviously is partly, uh, there's no changes uh to the twenty twenty. Uh, but this gives me an opportunity to dig into the contract a little bit further and maybe have us uh potentially look at any further negotiation before the next three years. Um, but I I'd absolutely support um and what I've learned from and been able to get my hands involved in. Uh, they've been doing a great job managing the course out there. Obviously, it's it's a major asset for this, for the city and for the community. And um, we do have some slides to go through. Uh, one comment I will make, um, just so I don't forget it, under the recommended motion. Again, there was a misprint there. Um, and we'll get that fixed. It says conference center and should be Gold Mountain Golf.
Sounds like a great sheet.
Yep.
Okay, so it's probably very similar from, I, okay.
I'll have to blame it on me. Yeah, so. Um, so we have here just to peel with the golf contract. Uh, golf, golf this term, like uh, Tim said, was uh twenty twenty to December third first twenty twenty-four. As you know, twenty twenty, uh, difficult year, uh, golf really came through, um, showing some good numbers uh in in that year. It was kind of shocking at uh the revenue spike and I feel came out to to get outside and play golf. Um, and so proposed options renew at uh three-year uh term, same terms and conditions, and also have a following options renew for additional three years after the contract. Uh, the guests tonight, if you want to introduce everybody, so Brian Flair, CEO of Columbia Hospitality, which is very special. We've got a long, longstanding uh relationship with Brian.
Yeah.
Uh, Sean, you're stuck on the airplane. Sean, you're already seen to be the golf operations. You've met Sean. He's been in a lot of events. I think, yeah, so he's been around a long time. Yeah, says apologies, ex uh city of Port Richard, Port Richard Council member. We don't blame him for that. Um.
We might be judging him a little bit.
Yeah, maybe. Uh, Mark is right behind me, area for golf, uh, and then Daryl Athene, who we've all met, uh, have an affinity for, been around at the golf course, well, before Columbia Hospitality, with Columbia Hospitality. Uh, as our general manager of Gold Mountain, and then Abel, that chief over here.
There you go.
Our golf superintendent maintains that beautiful asset out there. Um, uh, it's, it looks amazing. Love planet. And he's uh actively always looking for for deals. We're constantly looking at equipment. He's get a lot of emails, which I appreciate. Trying to be proactive, so.
And to be the geek.
Yeah, yes. He's got some really cool features. You go out there and watch his scheduling software, how he manages the water system and yeah, I I enjoy, don't understand most of it. It's great. Um, but we spent a lot of time, Tim and I, actually, it's been out there. I've been out there, uh, Brian Househall. We've spent a lot of time on golf, just seeing where we're going. Uh, yeah, I think the council had a tour this year, looking at the redevelopment plan, uh, started beginning. Hey, you know, I think you guys are already diving into it. I went to book a tee time and I go, oh, okay, only half the courses open to play there. I'm gonna play over here. And so, um, good to see definitely doing their, you know, getting some decent weather, doing some things. So that's uh, that's the housekeeping side. I'll put some metrics up and I'll just explain both graph, one little dashboard together. Anecdotally, we feel that golf has continued each year um and doing, doing better and better and better. Um, so we put the river to the road. I wanted to show from twenty twenty when they took this contract on, where we were as the the blue call, the blue, the blue bar is budget. And then the the uh orangish color is actuals. So in twenty twenty, we had, we had a projection, they're pretty close. Uh, twenty twenty-one shot up. You see the revenue boosting up there. Again, twenty twenty, COVID, as as expected, we did have, you know, had to shut down for a little while so we can get to get active. Um, twenty twenty-one exceeding budget, uh, continues decline. Twenty twenty-two, see the same thing. Twenty twenty-three, same thing. Twenty-four, I'm following through October. I expect that number to be similar to twenty-three, if not slightly above. Uh, and I, and oh, we're we're watching that closely. Um, so there's just a a way to see the visual that they continue to outperform each year. Yes.
I mean, these are fantastic numbers. I have Mike's permission to speak.
Um, okay, I have yours. Sure, I was gonna go to finance first before I went to the counselors. Um, go ahead.
Well, it's during the presentation. I'm okay.
Okay, go for it.
Clarification question. So I I I love these numbers. Why are you showing them to us for this in relation to the contract or no?
Just showing the.
Okay.
The performance.
That's it. Thank you.
Continued investment in the property.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few metrics. So we talked about fund balance. Uh, uh, where where are we at? Where are we looking at? So again, twenty twenty, we're in nine hundred and three thousand other fund balance. We have grown. Now again, this is the the twenty-four is as of right now. We know there's gonna be a spend that, you know, some spend that happens in December where the revenues are not there. So that will go down slightly. But you're looking at again that 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 graduated uh deep line. And so there's the possibility there as we talked about. Can we, you know, utilize those funds? We pull back into parks capital. We've got projects um and, you know, limited, you know, strained resources. So that's uh, and again, we're looking at that debt service fall off in twenty-eight. So continued projections in the right direction. But last box, I like that box there, twenty twenty-four golf rounds, uh, ninety thousand rounds projected. I kind of bumped that a little bit, projecting gender, I wouldn't say would be. Um, maybe we'll come just short of that, but again, that's a, that's a, that's a big number. Um, the golf course has been in the high, I think, ninety-two, ninety-three thousand. Reports, but again, right around that ninety thousand mark in last few years. So if you look at two thousand and nineteen, prior to the contract income is there, I have seventy-two thousand rounds. So really put some T sheet, uh, stock in that T sheet, uh, dynamic and dynamic pricing, um, uh, the round, revenue per round is up as well. So I did not put that in here, but I sold you in that. So.
Two hundred.
It's a. If you do math, that's a pretty significant. You're good. I believe you've been out there. And there's not a day I go out there when it's running. That is not, you're not waiting for the next hole and playing golf.
Thank you. Do we have a next slide?
That is your last slide.
Perfect. All right. Um, so any final thoughts on this item? Mr. Riley?
I have a final thought.
Perfect.
Uh, like we said before, an operator, a relationship we have with Columbia, we did a extensive RFP the last time we toured the entire state, looking um at courses with who would respond to the RFP. Columbia was the incumbent that's uh, uh, you know, won the bid. Um, a continued success, uh, in numbers speak, but also the relationship. Um, they were, we worked very well with with the operators, uh, with corporate, um, their investment in Birmerton, so.
Thank you. Uh, and Director Barker, any thoughts, any final words on this?
Yeah, only just, only just to add on that, um, in my previous life, I went through this process, the RFP process two years ago. Um, and that was switching over from a lease agreement to a management agreement. And so it worked through the kinks of that the first couple of years and walking in and seeing how well-oiled the machine uh this is, is is pretty awesome. Uh, so very happy with how things are going.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Um, Michael, nothing. Eric, okay, Jane?
Is this the time we can discuss how much lower the rates are here than Chambers Bay, which is the only other municipal golf course?
I think it's open. I think you have the right people in the room to be able to speak to that more educated than I am, so.
Okay, because I've had a lot of um residents ask why Birmerton City residents don't get a bigger discount or a discount. And we're not talking about, you know, buying the 10-round cars, they just think they should pay less. And then Chambers Bay, which it appears you're on the same level of golf course or pretty close to it. And they charge, I think, three times as much as we do, Gold Mountain. Is there any room for modifying charges to non-Bremerton City residents? Before you have them.
Um, we can absolutely look into that. We'll discuss that a little bit, uh, during that field trip. Um, but we can.
Chambers Bay has the US.
2015.
How is?
Figure out where, how much we're placing in the city of Bremerton. See if that is. Direction, I'm open to anything.
That's information you collect now?
May I ask for a point of information just briefly? Uh, you talked about Chambers Bay, I don't know golf, is Chambers Bay on the same level as Gold Mountain?
No, Chambers is a unique property because it's hosted the US Open.
Okay, so this is, and somebody else has said apples and oranges, so I don't know that we should really be comparing those two without verifiable.
They're maybe not exactly the same, but it's a municipal court that charges three times more than we do. So I think we might have room to, to grow our fees for non-Bremerton residents.
Um.
And that's something I would like them to look at.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that information piece. Please continue if you have another question.
Nope, I, I have a follow-up.
Okay. Right ahead.
There's a lot of difficulty in determining if someone is a resident of City of Bremerton. Um, like basically you would need to, like.
Bring your utility bill in.
Pretty much bring your utility bill in, um, or, you know, or bring your parcel number and, you know, you're a person who would have that even. So is that information?
Yeah, you have to know your council members' home phone number.
Yes, you have to bring them with you. You have to have a special permit to get the councils, you know, in, in on this.
Figure out a way.
But is there a way that you can collect this information? Without, like, you know, buttonholing people and saying, you can't play on this golf course unless you tell me where you live?
Backwards, people prove that there is.
Is there?
Okay, but so far, they, your initial thing that you're planning to do is to determine how many people who play there are City of Bremerton residents. So that's, that, my question is to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm like, exactly how we would do it.
I'll help you figure out, I have ideas.
But, yeah.
You could, you know, do what Jane was, was intimating just, uh, just there is like, go, hey, you know, would you be interested in being eligible for a discount?
Really?
City of Bremerton resident.
I think that this is, um, they are hearing the point loud and clear. They would like you to investigate seeing a discount for City of Bremerton residents. The other details, if this was approved by the agency, whether the organization could be hammered out later. And we're willing to be partners with you in that process. So you have some willing partners here. Uh, Director Barker?
Just, just briefly, I think, uh, the timing of this would be great too for, uh, the department to report back. As you know, we haven't raised our fees for quite some time. It would probably be good to coincide with that and maybe these two items come to council later this spring.
Thank you.
With some, with some thoughts and ideas about fee structures.
Thank you for hearing us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We look at our rates and adjust our rates based on concept. And, and that, you know, usually three to five percent of this coming year. But certainly more investment, again, based on like properties, what our concept's doing. So, um, I don't know exactly off the top of my head, total dollar wise, but I want to say from 15%. I mentioned some of our, our in-season weekend rates, um, increased. And then along with that, our dynamic, dynamic pricing model. We're optimizing our.
Yeah, so I'm going to say what Daryl said slightly different. Some of what your suggestion, which I think is an important suggestion, is already happening as a part of our number. I think I hear you asking a question over above those price adjustments that are already in place. And. Collect that data and make some.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Should, oh.
I just had a real quick, uh, because I actually appreciate the three-year renewal. Um, kind of catch for, I think, a few diligence, but I get no, Columbia's been fantastic, but I like that, especially with the pros line happening next year. That's, I think that's smart.
You should have.
Give me something else to do.
That's right, you don't have an opportunity.
Because you're bored over there, yeah, right. Counsel, should we treat this as consent to general?
Consent.
Consent, thank you very much. Oh, and thank you very much, everybody, for joining us today. We appreciate you. And the good work you're doing. Counsel, I'm going to call break until 7:05.
I guess you shouldn't have said that.
You shouldn't have.
Uh, with the planning commission also in November. Uh, the findings and conclusions from the planning commissioner in the packet, including the three comments that we received, uh, related to these code changes. Uh, one was unrelated to this topic, uh, one was a comment from the KDA, uh, which supported these proposed amendments, uh, with the caveat that they hope that ECD will be looking into, uh, potential expedited review or third-party review in the future. Um, and then another comment that was related to potential changes to our manufactured home, uh, park requirements. Uh, we are here tonight at the study session, not before the regular meeting next week. And this is, uh, these zoning code amendments are brought to you via the state of Washington. Uh, the local project review act, uh, is how the state, uh, regulates local project review. And that was recently changed, uh, with SB 5290, uh, with the hope that local processes will become more efficient. And that takes effect in January 2025. Uh, it's also, the state requires efficient and fair permitting to the growth management act. It's one of 15 GMA goals, uh, of the state of Washington. We're also directed by PSRC Vision 2050, uh, to have streamlined development review and permitting processes. And our own comprehensive plan, uh, calls out in our housing element. And our own comprehensive plan calls out in our housing element and economic development element. Provisions for efficient permit review. Our permit changing changes can best categorize into three separate categories. One permit process updates, two increased permit efficiency, and three some additional measures housekeeping. So 5290 required us to change our land use permit times. Currently, we have 120 days to process those permits. That would change the 5290 to 65 days for permits that don't require public notice. 100 days for permits that do require public notice. And 170 days for permits that require a public notice and public hearing. So this does not include building permits, fire department permits, or other permits where coordination for cultural resources is required. Now, cultural resources are an issue for our partners. Some properties contain culturally significant items potentially. Requires additional archaeological studies at times that can slow up permits in coordination with tribal entities. So it's the reason for the exemption there. Increased permit efficiency. So SB 5290 requires jurisdictions to issue refund for permits that don't need deep prescribed timelines. Unless we choose from a menu of items to introduce permit efficiencies into our system. So. Not wanting to issue refunds due to budget constraints. Also, that is a whole nother level of red tape that would likely slow down the permitting process. We have these 10 available items to choose from. The three bolded items were selected and recommended by the planning commission. And these other items I'll go through shortly here. So expedited review process. That's not recommended for selection as if we codify expedited timelines and process. That could put us in a tight position. So we have staff that ebb and flow here at city of Bremerton. And if we hired a consultant to have an expedited process, they also have staffing changes. And it would be hard to commit to a number of days that could provide for expedited process. That being said, you can look into administratively having an expedited review process rather than a codified one. Reasonable fees spoken with a number of jurisdictions about this. And reasonable can be subjective and is open to legal challenge. So while there are jurisdictions taking a stab at reasonable fees. We feel like that would be another red tape exercise that took time away from permitting that could also lead to legal. Interlocal agreement. We could have an interlocal agreement with other jurisdictions to help with permit review. That being said, interlocal agreements sometimes take a very long time, even years to come to a conclusion. And then you need to strike to frame that staff and then overview that work. And it looks like it would not be an efficient thought. On call permit assistance and new budgeted positions. Both of these items and others to some degree were not considered as we're in a tight budget situation already. And adding services that will cost us money is not really an option. Self certification. So can we find ways where licensed professional in private sector can put a stamp of approval on a plan and submit it to the city? And not have anyone review it now. It may be some time before we find the best practices that would fit with the city for self certification. That didn't require review, but because that can be kind of ominous subject that was not. Considered very bad. An applicant meeting. This is a nice option where after sending a review letter for re-review letters. You, before you can cancel an applicant's permit, you need to meet with the applicant person and then go over any potential changes with them. But there's a caveat to that, that if you choose this option, then you must also not have any fee associated with appeals. So we feel that that would lead to frivolous appeals rather than have any fee, which would slow down the permitting process. So moving into those bolded options. Optional increased middle application process. So for anyone at the table that's unfamiliar, if, if you're going to, if you have a project in mind, you can pay the city $100. And meet the fire department, building, public works, planning. And we can invite others to attend. Sometimes we invite public health district, the tribe, state agencies, all to participate for $100. To give you feedback on your preliminary ideas. Right now it is required for certain permits. If we make it optional, we can have one of those, one of the three answered. So that's pretty simple. The second is to only require a public hearing when it's required by state statute. So these are the affected code sections here where we potentially require a public hearing. And it is not required by state statute. I'm happy to explain any of these specific permits. If you have questions, the majority of these have an option. Written into the code where it says if the director chooses to elevate these to a, to a hearings examiner level permit. Then she, then she has the option to do so. Once again, I'm happy to read through this list if anyone's interested. Pausing. Okay?
Sorry. Affordable housing bonus?
Affordable housing bonus, we added to the code, I believe, two years ago. And it's for the Bremerton Housing Authority that have a 50% density increase. If housing in its entirety, all the housing that's provided is affordable. We have not had a permit submitted for that.
And second and final question, the requirement for public comment would stay the same as it is?
Correct. These would stay a two. A type two permit requires public notice, a type three permit requires public notice and a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Outright permitted housing uses. So right now there are three types of uses. Generally outright permitted uses, conditional uses, prohibited uses. So this option would be that if there is a use for housing, that it be outright permitted and not conditioned. So it's not saying that if a housing use is prohibited, that we allow that. It's only that we take any conditional use permits and make them outright permitted uses. So a conditional use permit lets you add conditions into a permit that are not necessarily in the code. And it also requires public notice. So these four housing types are concurrently conditional use permits. Cottage housing, group residential, senior housing complex, and manufactured home. We have never received a conditional use permit for cottage housing, senior housing, or a manufactured home park. So we see that as being a very minor impact. Group residential, I believe, since I think maybe we had five or six permits. That are conditional use permits over the last 10 plus years.
Can I ask you a question on these? How come the parking requirements are so different? Like cottage housing, we require one and a half. Senior housing, they require one. A lot of seniors still have a partner, so they could probably have cars, hopefully one. Cottage housing is small housing. Why isn't that one vehicle?
That's a great question for two reasons. One is, is scope for what we're proposing and two is what's coming in the future. So one scope, we're just trying to meet these 5290 requirements. So all of these cottage group, senior manufactured home park, they all have criteria for being great.
Right.
We're planning on keeping that criteria of approval, but not making it a conditional use permit. So you still need to meet the criteria that it's not a conditional use permit. Does that make sense?
Yes, but is there still time to change what that criteria is?
There will, it's not recommended for the scope of this permit. We will be coming back to council specifically for parking. We'll be doing a.
Okay.
Big overview of our parking standards, including all of these items. But generally, if there's less than two parking spaces required per residential unit. It's either a type of housing that we're trying to promote for affordable housing, or it's associated with a population that typically has less cars.
Okay. Not to me.
Definitely.
It was a perfect volume.
Perfect.
Yes.
All right. Well, these are just some examples of those housing types. Manufactured home parks, we have one at the southern end of Kitsap Lake on Rice Road. A senior housing product complex, we have vintage out on Sheridan. A group residential facility, we have one on Tidings Street, south of Kitsap Way in West Bremerton. And then we also have a, an example for cottage housing of Snyder. Doesn't mean that these have been reviewed under these code section. They're just examples of the state and post representative house types. And the additional housekeeping measures that I was referencing. First of all, designer view. We're recommending, or excuse me, the planning commission is recommending that the building permit. From a designer view permit not be a type two, that it transitioned to a type one. So currently the designer view process requires a public meeting. For a conceptual meeting, then another public meeting, all with public notice for the response conference. And then the building permit also has public notice and an option to appeal. So this is a lot of process and time for a development to go through without any certainty that they will be able to develop at the end of their project when they're submitting a building. For that reason, that building permit submitted is recommended to go from a type two permit to a type one permit.
Only within downtown and Harrison Heights.
Those are the only places that have the design.
Where is the design review board? I looked on the city's website and I couldn't find that we actually have a design review board.
I will look at the, look at that.
I Googled too.
It's a group that we have.
Do they have regular meetings?
I wasn't ready for that question.
Yeah, because I couldn't find anything either.
So you'll follow up and give us some information about the design? Thank you.
Everybody, some information on design.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Some additional measures, applicant response time. Right now we allow for the applicant to have 90 days to respond to a permit in any way. So with these new timelines, each time that we get. Revised materials, we need to revive, we need to review those and it takes time. So that means that total review time, say it's the 65 days. Every time we get a revised application, we have less days and less days and less days to, to meet that time period. So we're proposing to have a 60 day timeline location in which you can respond back to the city. You send a review letter, respond back to us within 60 days. Otherwise, we could lapse that permit. Also that if we ask for the same item three times in a review letter and that's not provided. Then we can, we, it's proposed also to lapse that permit. Once again, our time constraints are getting much tighter. And every time we receive a review letter, we have less and less time left on that clock to issue a decision. So we feel like this is a reasonable change.
Does your clock stop when you send a letter?
It does.
So if you have 120 day permit. You send them letters and they don't get back, okay? So it stops every time. Why do you send more than one request for additional permit information?
Well, I would think that that's helpful, helpful for people to, as long as you lose an email.
It is very common. That we send a review letter that has three items on it and we will get a submission back that has one item. So we sent another review letter that says, thank you for submitting item one, please submit items two and three. And then we'll get another submit that may not have item three. So it's, it's typical.
And you don't conclude that the people aren't too interested?
It does.
Sorry.
We're.
Sorry.
Understood.
Yeah, okay.
I can go back to that.
Anybody else on council wants to bring it up? Otherwise, let's keep going.
And then lastly, we had heard, I believe there was a new apartment project on Wheaton Way. That we got a lot of phone calls from, like, what are they building there?
Yeah.
And.
There's no sign.
Because there's no sign.
Yep.
And council indicated in DCD, we would like a sign. And so we heard you. There, we have a proposal to have a sign. If you have a development proposal. Then you would put an informational sign, letting people know what your project details are and project contact information. This would not have a public comment period. It would be there for informational purposes so that people know. When we get a permit in and we deem that permit complete, then you put up the sign. And when your project is final, you can then take that sign down.
Why is the city providing the sign? Why isn't the developer providing the sign?
It's a way to make them uniform.
You can.
And the planning commission was, had some heartburn about this being a barrier to develop. And so when we mentioned that we could provide the sign, that's what City of Oklahoma does. Then they felt better about, about requiring the sign in general. So.
Is it really a high price point for us to provide a sign?
That's objective, but I would say no.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna jump in, actually. Like the idea, not only the uniformity, but also then the city is making sure that the information about the project is accurate and out there. And it's not left up to the individual. So there will be no hiding anything that the city can make sure it's out there. Got that, sorry, you got that.
We want, it's, it would be a blank sign with the notice on top. So that, that, that's the uniformity.
Oh.
That it would be, everyone would know that when you see this exact type format, then. What the purpose of it is. And it would look different than, maybe I should provide.
An example, you gonna mock that up for us? Thank you, sir. All right.
Than a land use sign that do require public notice, so that they're easy to differentiate from.
Okay.
That's the idea. This would be required for all residential projects of five dwelling units or more. And at any permit that requires.
Thank you.
And we can come back to this later. Council president.
I, we got one more slide. The presentation is this?
The planning commission recommendation. Yep.
All right. All right, councilors. Questions? Anna, and then, or did you want to go first? You want Jane to go first? Jane and then Anna. Yep.
Is all staff time. Working on permits in any way all covered by permit fees?
No, that'd be an enterprise fund and DCD is not an enterprise fund.
So. It seems like a lot of cities do recoup their costs on. It seems like a lot of cities do recoup their costs on.
That may be more of a conversation for budget.
Okay, so like for instance, the hundred dollar preliminary. Permit, uh, meeting, hundred dollars doesn't even cover the cost of one employee. To come to a meeting, let alone from four or five different apartments. How do they charge their time, Seth?
It's at a low, it's, I'd say it's like, uh, the chicken that they sell at Costco. Like you can go there and you, you're, they get you in the door.
I like this analogy.
Courage permit.
No, except you have to be a member, otherwise you can't get into Costco.
You know what, but this is, but like our, our housing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, not every permit is housing.
Right.
Once again, I believe that that's more discussion for budget and for rate tables. Um. But.
Maybe we had to balance our budget.
The idea behind it is that we want people to come in for this early guidance. Rather than getting very far down the road, designing a project that's not feasible. Uh, there's a lot to deal with between fire, public works, planning and building.
Right.
Even if you're a seasoned professional. And this is more about cost, I understand.
So does the state set permit fees or do we set permit fees?
We set permit fees.
Okay. So permit fees could be increased or we could have an enterprise, but do it that way.
Anna? You're all done?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. The state. Hi Garrett, the state law, um, that we're complying with is, uh, S P is fifty-two ninety. Do I have that right? Does that, um, it calls for increased permit efficiencies? And something about community engagement as well. Am I correct on that?
There's some citation here.
Um, I thought I saw it somewhere in this long thing of, in one of the planning commission things. Um. Hang on, please.
Sure.
Okay, um, I'm not gonna find it, but it, it calls for something in addition to permit efficiencies. Can you recall what that is?
I know that in the planning commission packets, we're recommending this, uh. Informational signs for additional outreach, um, but beyond that, the bill is more about increasing. Uh, permit efficiencies through, and in some cases through removing some. Of the process, like a public hearing would be considered additional public process. So I don't know that there is anything about additional public process. I think that through permit efficiency, removing some of that is seen as extreme.
Yeah, um, well, I, at my, um, at the town hall, just this past Monday. Um. Despite the fact that people, um, thought that their public comments would have no effect whatsoever on the city. Um, which. I really didn't have hard evidence to contradict. So, public comments apparently do not have, is, is that accurate? Like unless public comments are finding inaccuracies. Then public comments have no effect. Is that ac- is that correct?
I wouldn't say so. Well, I. Permit reviewed is to ensure that decisions that were issued. Other state federal laws. If there is some code on the book that says that we need to consider a certain type of. Public comment in order to approve a permit, then, um. I, I, I guess we just look at the criteria for approval. And if a public comment isn't relative, uh, related to that permit criteria of approval, then we can deny a permit based off of. Um, public comments.
Okay, and, and I'm assuming from the way you're talking that there are very, very few permits. Where a public con- comment is relevant.
Well, you had a lot of, uh, neighbors from the B tribe that were at the, at the meeting. And we've gotten a lot of comments from them. I let them know that that public comment led to us doing additional outreach to the Sopanis tribe. Department of Ecology, Department of Fish and Wildlife, um, to ensure and let them know that we're considering. Community and, you know, please take a look at this. So I'd say that that is a way that public comment can have an effect to. It, it led to us doing additional housing.
Okay, um, I don't know how many of you saw the email that I sent today. Um, the electronic copy was truncated and really all the meat of it was deleted.
Oh, it's partially deleted?
Yeah, like four fifths of it was deleted, yeah. Um, on the other hand, this printout is complete.
Okay.
Um, so.
Thank you. For like clarification, let's take a look.
Yeah, this is basically a reprise of my September thirteen twenty-three presentation. Uh. Was.
Thank you.
Saying, let's mimic what City of Palmsville does. Hey Garrett. For you, um, you've seen almost all of it before. But it's just saying, let's mimic what City of Palmsville does, which is if, um, somebody's applying for a permit to, uh. Fix the cracks in their concrete steps or get a new water heater or. No, they don't need. Of the, or to like put in new windows, right? That's not of public importance, right? It's a little or no public importance. But everything else in Palmsville, um, gets a standard, not filled out by the developer. But a regular notice proposed land use action, um, that we now only require for types two and three. Most permits are type one. I don't think it's a barrier to development. To let the community have an opportunity to comment on the city that they live in. Um, and to have an opportunity to shape the city that they live in. So. I, I appreciate, I do sincerely appreciate D C D going into this informational signage. But I don't think that a developer filling out a sign with their impression of what they're doing. Would have as much merit for the community as D C D presenting. What they with their expertise and oversight think that the developer is doing. But that sign doesn't go up until after the permit's been issued. It should go up when the permit is applied for. That's, that's the, that. Yeah.
Okay.
So if we have recommended changes, I just wanna clarify, sorry, and let me just clarify, do, do they have to go back to the planning commission for approval?
Something in that scope, I, I think it would, um, to, to say anything more than a water heater. So that a, a, a new single family home, um, would need a public notice, a public comment period. A public comment period, any, any. Any permit that we do have a couple of public comment period for anyone that provides a comment that has appeal right. So, uh, you could then appeal, uh, a single family home permit or wherever that yard mark might be. That might also be outside of the scope of what proposed, but, uh, yeah. I hear council deliberate.
Um. Who actually has a floor right now?
I, I do.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So I am obviously strongly in support of this. I think that we should be open and transparent with the community. Um. And I, I think bringing it back to the planning commission. It, it, it's not that, not that heavy a lift. Um, but obviously that would only happen if the rest of council supported it. So I bring it up, I'll keep bringing it up, but I think doing so at fourteen month intervals, not too bad. I'm praising myself.
All right, who's next?
Garrett.
Garrett, you're next, go for it.
Just pointing out that the intent behind these changes that are required by the state is to increase permit efficiency. In order to add housing over time, make that firm, uh, process more streamlined. Uh, so, uh, just wanted to point out that those, the, that those two proposals may conflict with one another.
And Anna, I don't think your email was cut off. I'm looking at it now.
Really, I, I then.
I think you need to just, like. Seymour.
What I had.
There's probably a Seymour option, the little dot, dot, dot. So, councilors, any other questions? Eric?
Uh, comment, comment, optional piece of metal.
And now, you should see more.
Support what you, you guys are doing there. So it's optional. So if you have a seasoned veteran that knows what they're doing. You don't have to wait through the schedule, I get it. But I do think the one hundred dollar nominal fee is appropriate. So you don't get people say, hey, I'd like to do this, let me run this by and waste all your time. So they get a little money in the game, but I don't find a hundred dollars. That might save me a lot of time and effort if I can meet with all the department heads I need to meet with. So I think that's an excellent idea, optional, just the way you have proposed. I kinda agree with Anna on this sign here where we just provide the heading. And I know I'm being theatric, but basically the developer could do a little, five little picture houses. We'll say it or whatever, you know, a little stick figure thing, you know, it's whatever they want. Now, we just said earlier that it's absurd for self-certification. I think it's absurd to put the onus on the developers, say, hey, this is what I plan on doing, oh. But you know, just kinda, I'm not saying all developers don't like this, but they wanna get their project done. So they may not be fully disclosing exactly what this thing is. I prefer the D C D, you know what it is? Just drive it and just put it on the sign. And I don't think that needs to go to the planning commission. I think you guys can change that in-house, put the onus on you, you know?
I think that that's reasonable. We do have a provision here that, uh, in written in, it be installed for instructions you provide by a city staff. So that we could control the type of information that's included in that notice and a standard handout. Uh, that being said, uh, I'm not being, you know.
Yeah, I'm not trying to micromanage you, but I think I have the support here. I think you guys need to. So to there, like. He's a plywood, you guys will have some sort of basic information and the rest of the space they can use to put shiny pictures or stuff they want. Right, is that where you're?
There'd be a picture of the proposed development and then, uh, a page strapping.
And that's, that's something you control.
Right.
And is there any space on them for them to add more stuff or, so this is really a standard, like, okay. Well, that, that's not what you were describing earlier. You said it was a blank thing with a header on it and the, and the. Yeah.
Developer. And I, and I, and I mismanaged those, I apologize. What I mean is we're handing them a sign. And then also instructions on what to put on there. So if that is, uh, if this is.
So we're doing. City of Bremerton, it's a corrugated piece of plywood. I mean, have you seen our land use signs? Yeah.
Over the city.
Occasionally.
It would look very similar to.
That was actually funny, Anna. She said occasionally, seeing the sign, you know, her earlier point. That was funny.
So our city logo would be on a blank piece of corrugated plywood. And the only oversight that our city would have would be, we hope you will follow these instructions.
No.
I am happy to, uh, add it. That, that was the idea, that we had this corrugated piece of plastic. And that we have instructions on what to place on there. That's the idea. Yeah, we would have them.
Well, you have to tell them where to put it, so they, like, there's an apartment building going in and might just, right? The ground is covered with blackberries and all other invasive. If you don't tell them where they're gonna put it, they're gonna put it behind the blackberries, right?
Oh, yeah.
So in the rest of the, well, in many parts of the world. There's a standardized sign, you give them the verbiage that they have to put on it. And they pay to go to the print shop to have that done. And they can add a picture if they want. I haven't really seen that many pictures. It's like. This project is sixty-eight, two-bedroom apartments with all new utilities and blah, 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 and we're paying for it all. But you know, I mean, this is standard. Standard thing where it says we're doing full street improvements, we're paying for them or whatever.
Am I reading the room correctly that you would like revision?
Yes, yes.
Can we?
I just wanna make sure that I'm going, when I, Anna, I didn't receive her email. Um, and I'd like to look at it.
Eric, can you shoot both?
Sure. And I'll, I'll forward this to you electronically. Now I have it.
So, um. We're together on these things right there. Um, I'm hearing two separate conversations about. And Jeff is nodding. Jeff, why don't you summarize the conversations you're hearing? And, cuz I, sometimes you do that better than me, if that's okay.
I think one is Anna's proposal to change it to require extra signs and the other conversation is. How to best manage the signs that we require developers post.
Right, and so I don't think that we need to go back to the planning commission to talk about the second of those. I think we would need to go back to talk about the first because it does involve, um, expanding. The potential, um. Appeals that we would have, the people that would be entitled to notice and, and changing those procedures. Which, as Garrett mentioned, is probably the opposite of what this legislation is trying to do. So we can figure out whether we're, we're moving forward with option one or two. I appreciate that, just so I know what I'm working on.
Okay. Okay, so we want some more revisions. What are we gonna do with this? Proposal for the year now. Are we waiting for January to come back?
Well, we have, this is, this needs to be done by the end of the year, at least.
Okay.
So if we could. Go with at least the part that we're ready to move forward on and then.
If we get clear direction that you want D C D to handle this sign. I think is one option, or the other option being that an expansion of what gets.
Signs.
Yeah, the one or the two.
Yeah, so council can provide clear direction on that. That'll determine what we're, what we have to, the, what we have to do. But that being said, this law goes into effect January one, so if we don't have something on the books.
So Jeff and, I mean, I, is it okay if Eric hasn't had a chance yet? Can I go ahead and? Okay, Jeff, Jeff then.
I just wanted to read, just to make sure on the same page, this is the, the new language in the B M C. Not a verbatim, but it says the city.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, point of order here. Thank you.
But so I wanna make it clear, this is a language in the packet is, the city shall provide the sign along with instructions for posting the sign. Proof of posting such as a photo must be provided, it must be posted on a site. Must be posted concurrently with review of development permits after staff determines adequate information is available. Must include at a minimum, the permit number, direction of, duration of construction, site plan, elevations and contact, contract, sorry, contact information. And must be installed per instructions provided by city staff. So I.
So what I was hearing is that people would prefer perhaps that D C D fill out the sign and then tell them how, where it needs to be. Posted conspicuously and then provide D C D with a picture showing that it had been so conspicuously posted. And that way there's no.
Yep, that's one.
That's, I think that's how Port Orca does it. One reason I say that is driving around, the signs all have the same thing. And so I'm guessing that it's someone on staff.
Right.
Everywhere.
Okay, so Jeff and then, um, Eric, go ahead.
So I think that's the appropriate way to do it. That also provides uniformity. And the intention of this bill is to alleviate burdens on builders. And if the city knows what they want, and you provide them the sign anyways, put the information on the darn sign. And give it to them and tell them to plant it and snap a picture, email it back and you're done. So that's the, it fulfills the intent of the legislation as well. So I'm thinking that's.
That's one thing, though. There's two, two subjects and others we're discussing.
Okay, so, uh, what, well, let's disaggregate them, so. We've got that as a plan, so that's the one revision you're hearing from, does everybody else agree on this one revision that Eric? We've got that as a plan. So that's the one revision you're hearing from. Does everybody else agree on this one revision that Eric detailed?
I agree. Did DCD do the sign?
The DCD did the sign. And it sounds like there's a code to mimic, right? And the land use is. Yes.
Does it actually need to be changed? Because what it says and what it says is that you'll follow the instructions that TCD provides you. So is the.
Yeah, that that means that they're creating the sign and all that. And we want uniformity.
And it says that.
Well, let's say the city shall provide the sign along with instructions.
That's with instructions. So now you're trusting them to do.
But both sides.
No, the instruction.
They can do as much, DCD can do as much as it wants. I'm, what I'm saying is it doesn't. We don't, we.
You're saying it's vague enough that.
It's vague enough.
Second my internal policy.
DCD will come up with.
Okay.
Policy or procedures or whatever, instructions that can be tweaked and changed because they handle it as like a memo or something.
So Jared, if that would work fine, but you understand the legislative intent that was just expressed tonight without a vote. So. All right. So you decide going through the code, whether this meets that criteria of what you're hearing from your council, or if you need to tweak that language.
And I want to make sure we do have a general consensus that this is, this is the direction we want to give rather than changing language that it's vague enough, that the language is vague enough already. Are we good? I'm good on that part. Okay. All right. I know I see you. So we have a second piece that we're talking about. And Anna, are you going to highlight the second piece right now for us? Second piece, please go.
So I found the language I was looking for and. The state permit is, and I quote, processing permit applications in a timely and fair manner. And I think that providing opportunity for public comment absolutely meets that additional requirement of being fair. And that's why I still like my proposal. I, I, I think every single statement that Eric made was accurate. And I understand Attorney Fennel's objection last September and again tonight, that this might delay permitting. And I think that our obligation to our people with you supersedes that. There, I'm all done.
Okay, so the second issue is the, that public comment has no bearing on permit selection.
I beg.
Permit. Permit.
That type one, type one permits do not require a placard that says notice of proposed land use section. I'm proposing to change that to mimic the language in Paul's vote, which is any type one permit that has no or limited public impact. Right? Like installing a new water heater or new windows, they don't need a placard. And if you're building a new building, then you got to have a placard.
And this is the change that you would not feel comfortable keeping from, like, that would need to go back to planning commission. Okay, council, do we have a general consensus to see this through or are we, is this something?
I would, I think we need more notice, not less. I, you know, maybe it's not for one house. But certainly, I mean, if you don't have to do it until you're putting in five houses, there's lots big enough on my street that they could jam in four houses onto it. So they wouldn't have, we wouldn't get any notices in the neighborhood.
Eric?
So I'm suggesting we bifurcate this. We go with cleaning up number two, if it needs cleaning up after legal and DCD reviews the language. And then the other one goes back to the planning commission. Because I agree with you. I would like to have noticed whatever's going on. Instead of seeing the construction happening, going, what the hell is going on next door? You know, I think everybody should know what's going on in the neighborhood. But that needs to go to the planning commission. So. Is that something that you only can do once a year? Is that what you're going to tell me? Because there was all kinds of stuff at the planning commission on zoning. You only can do it once a year. So can this, can we bifurcate? I know I'm using big words. I just, I learned that.
I'm sure you know.
It's possible, yes. But we'd like, one, get council consensus on what we should take to the planning commission. And two, are you talking about increased informational signage? Or signage that would carry with it public notice and a chance to appeal?
Those are, that's what I'm saying. Those are different things.
Right?
That's true, because they don't have a chance to appeal on a type one. So what you're saying is, what's the point?
No, it's fine to let people know what's going on. It's a different issue to say that you have a right to comment and a right to appeal.
And so Anna's point is that, oh, and excuse me, so Anna's point, so Anna's point is that she wants to see us have public notice. With the right to appeal. Am I understanding that correct?
Public comment.
Public comment and.
Notice.
Public notice, public comment with the right, which includes the right to appeal.
Yeah.
So that is what we're discussing now. Sorry to interrupt. Thanks, Jane.
Comment, why right to appeal or can be comment without the right to appeal?
That's, I think, the, and Anna, if I'm correct in understanding, you believe that the public has the right to appeal. What's the point of public comment if there's no, if it has no bearing? It's like a check the box, right? And I get that. So public comments. Yeah, so I think that's what we're talking about.
You on what grounds? It meets the, you're saying the appeal because it doesn't meet the current provisions of the code that allows that use. Yeah, everybody should have the right to.
I mean, why are we issuing a permit that doesn't follow code?
Right.
But but that's my whole point. Sometimes humans make mistakes. Yeah. And it could be.
I don't want to make them blind.
Right.
It could be that DCD, someone in planning is overworked and they do one too many stamps and they got it approved. Then all of a sudden, you, you've got something like, what the heck? Yeah, I got my permit. What are you going to do about it?
Is there no path for that right now?
Well, you don't even know it's being built. Tell them bulldozers, Eric, clearing the ground. And do you really want that person that that got the permit suffer undue financial stress when they find out, oh, I couldn't do that after all?
Garrett?
File an appeal and not have any real reason to do so. It could be frivolous just to. Add to process, which would be a fear also, and that you're now causing someone to potentially hire a legal team. Or something that they would otherwise be able to legally do outright.
That's true.
Which adds high cost to potentially any project in the city, which would be onerous.
Does that happen? How often does that happen?
We don't get many appeals, but we. Well, we don't have a, with the current permit process that we have now. Limits appeals to permits that have public comment periods. If you're then expanding that out to any permit that we have essentially for any new construction.
Oh, you're right. The public's got no say.
Is there a cost to appeal? What's the cost?
But also the public, okay, let's, let's, what I. Okay, so the public may have a bearing. If they do have public comment, then perhaps if, and the issue you're addressing, which is maybe the checks and balances, right? There's an opportunity for the public to be checks and balances and for somebody to take another look. Yeah.
I, I don't think I can give you council direction on, on Anna's.
So you're going to, so I have posted for the permits approved.
Yeah, it should be when the permit is applied for.
Can we?
Yeah.
Move forward with what the planning commission's recommended and then can we look into strengthening this?
With the planning commission.
Chief McGanney would like to, Chief McGanney wants to weigh in.
I just would like clarification. So we're saying that we want public comment on any application or any permit that basically has to do with anything semi big. So if somebody wants to build a house that currently they don't have to, but there's no way we could support that. I mean, the amount of public, every permit that would be applied for, we'd have to have a public comment.
The amount of STEs you need to respond to all of those public comments would be.
That, that would be, I don't know if you realize how many permits that we're going through.
No worries, but how does, how does Paul's vote do it?
Well, they, it's for type two and type three applications. I'm looking at their code.
They've got a lot of H O. Type one, their code is.
Well, that might be their current code, but everybody is having.
They just updated in 2024, so maybe they changed.
I hope they didn't.
And I'd be happy to.
Type two and type three.
Separate process when you approach the planning commission.
But also Paul's vote does not have new, not the current activity that we do.
Right.
In it, in, I mean, I'm just going to speak for the party department. We, we have three people in the office. Two of them are going to be brand new. I have one person be able to review permits right now. It, it, with that process. For all the fire stuff. So.
Thank you.
If we had to go to public comment on every permit, that would be.
I see what you're saying. And tonight before us is, how do we conform with the state law, which is to expedite permits and this, so, but.
Fair.
So, okay, but maybe that battles for another day, but I do think that the item two.
Fair there. Sorry. I think fair in this case is that the process for the applicant is fair.
Yeah, get the public.
Not that every swinging Richard could have a comment on some of the smoke color.
Yeah, look at a swinging Richard up. But I, I understand. No, I understand.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
There's probably.
So my comment is, if this went and was approved by the planning commission in October. I don't understand why we're getting this at the last possible study session of the year in order to get this passed.
Well, Garrett's been with us every week. Go ahead on this.
I think you'll find a lot of other jurisdictions are in the same boat, passing it very late. We've been busy with the comp plan update. Once again, these are. Updates that are required by the state. So. Do you just look up swinging Richard?
The first Google search is very interesting. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll say it for Denise, because if she's not up, it's like, we have this.
She's off, unfortunately. Her bandwidth is too low.
You know, hurry up and wait. And then move forward quickly. And it feels like there's a lot of things that councils ask to do. And I appreciate that you're busy. I, I get that, but. But how long ago did, well, that's just making.
Shall we place this on consent or general business? So here's the deal. So.
The only difference is in that devil, that's the only difference.
Oh, yeah, there's a, so. I just want to do a quick check, okay, because I want to, we have that second item still. I don't know that we have general consensus on it. In my opinion, and it's my two cents, it does make the permit process longer. But that's all I'll say about that. But let me go back to it. It's posting public notice. Requesting public comment and setting the ability for appeal. So it's a three-layered thing. So where did we lose consensus? Let's, let's go backwards. Public appeal. Do we have general consensus for that?
It depends on what they say.
It, so no, we don't have general consensus on that. So public.
We can't discriminate on the basis of, it feels frivolous to me. It's, it's an appeal, it's an appeal. Am I correct?
We.
Yeah, you can't just say no.
Okay. So what do you mean, you can't just say no?
You can't say no to appeals.
Yeah, you can't just.
No, she's asking you if you want the appeal language revised into this.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
So we, we do not have general consensus to add the appeal language into it. Let's talk about public comment. Do we want public comment on every type A permit? Type one, I'm sorry.
Sort of clarifying.
Ones that are of no or. It excludes those that are of no or limited public interest. Like building a house is a public interest. It's on page.
Do we have a general consensus or public comment for these specific type A, type one?
Well, if you're going to have a public comment, then you have the right to appeal. You can't, you can't have one without the other.
I was initially in support of this, but the cost, as it was explained to me, outweigh the benefits and so I can no longer support. I don't support.
I'm not in support, but I'm wondering about the public notice. Jeff, wait before we.
Are you proposing amendments to what's currently before us for future discussion?
I mean.
Asking for.
You have to pass it. So it has to be amended before we pass.
So I like Michael's, I like Michael's suggestion of. If this, and I'm not comfortable putting any language in tonight regarding this proposal. I'll, I'll, I give it general, but it needs to be fleshed out a lot more from the specifics and impact to staff. So. Is there?
Well, it's public hearings. So then we're going to discuss it after the public hearing and take action, correct?
Well, the proposal was to send that specific idea, just like, hey, we would like extra communication signage back to planning commission for the deep dive and for a recommendation that would work with staff.
Are we, we're not, we're no longer talking about the, the way that the signage is.
Not that, no, no, not the.
Okay, okay. You're talking about the additional environment. Yes. Less, I, I think where we're at, and I don't know where Denise is at, which is hard, she's not here, but you're here. We kind of have. If, I mean, still, the three of us are not in consensus of the, of the two items for public comment and public. Or which would encompass the right to appeal. But my question is the posting of the signage. For the specific types of housing, type one, that she listed in her proposal. For just the notice for public land use. Right? Am I understanding this issue? Go ahead.
I, I love the concept of this. It needs a lot more detail work. So I, what I would say is, they already have the direction to look at the language for the. The sign that's in here already. And then for Anna's proposal, if there's council direction that planning commission, when you do have bandwidth, please look at this in detail and come back with a suggestion of how to meet the intent of extra communication to the public regarding projects. Without, without putting a giant word on staff.
But I think A nine is good as it, I think I'm good with A nine as it's written.
Yes.
With DCD knowing that what we've expressed can be written into their instructions for the applicant on how to move forward with the posting of the sign.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so we are going to respectfully pass Anna's proposal today, but. It would be nice for planning commission to review this, flesh it out a little bit more.
Can we say that as like a directive? Or, you know, like, we.
Can we direct?
We strongly urge you.
Okay, we strongly urge you, however, this is a mayor's commission.
Have this as something to look at when we do a retreat is to like.
We can't.
We got too much.
We have too much for.
And if it has to go to planning, it has to go to.
Okay, our, we have too much, as I was stating, for our retreat. We can put it, we can send this to the planning commission at a future date. And urge them to take a look at this, requesting, what we really are looking for is more notice to the public of what's happening with the land in the city board. All right, I'm going to. As written, A nine, we're going to have a public hearing on it. Okay, and then we'll have. Discussion and we'll take action on the same night. Is that correct? Jane? Are you distracting Garrett again? Okay.
Told us to do. The planning commission unanimously recommends adoption of proposed zoning. Council should hold an open record public hearing, consider testimony and adopt the proposed change. So it's like.
It's a recommendation. Do you not like the language?
I don't like the.
Okay. I mean, they're not directing. I mean, it is, I get, I totally understand because we're here at the ninth hour. Yeah.
The planning commission spent a lot of time.
Eight hour, nine hour? Either way, it's the eighth hour technically. It's eight, 10. So we're going to go ahead and move forward. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We appreciate you and your fantastic holiday sweaters. You really bring it every year, man.
Sweater made the present.
All right, next up. A Director Riley is here to discuss item A 10, obligation of ARPA funds. I don't know that this has had a chance to go through. Um, I don't know that this has had a chance to go through finance committee, because I think it's a new. This is a full council thing.
Added to your agenda.
However, what I will do is I will defer finance committee first on this and then um actually pause. Housing, so I'll go to you first, Jeff, okay, great, so we'll do that first, uh when we go to questions, okay, Mr. Riley, go right ahead.
Perfect, so real quick, uh we talked to the classic back to September, uh they have a brief at study session in October. Also mentioned it again, I think uh in another meeting uh early November, as council member Copland kind of gave a briefing on where we were at the hybrid shelter with B H A. Um, so right now what's in front of you is you have non-obligated. ARPA funds are not obligated, they have to be obligated by the end of the year, uh one point one million dollars, you have it budgeted currently in the budget for twenty four, the part of the hybrid, the hybrid shelter. So um discussion for council, so I've got like quick two page slides just talking about where we're at, what we've been, what's been proposed. And what our options are to obligate uh obligate the funds and some closing talks and building applications. Share my screen. Okay, so uh current ob- current obligator for funds, we in the twenty twenty four budget, there's one point one million dollars of ARPA. Uh, that is identified uh for the hybrid low barrier shelter. Uh, we have a resolution, we have thirty three seventy five, speaks uh commitment with working with community partners to develop a hybrid low barrier walk-up congregant pallet shelter. Uh, current status with the hybrid plan, um I've connected to the B H A couple times, I know uh council, council member of Copland is on there, I think they made weekly. Um, but currently formally what we have, um we don't have a formal plan to propose, that's been proposed by the the group uh from B H A. Uh, there have been discussions, continued discussions with B H A on property estimate, but there's nothing to you to present, nothing writing, no documentation for that. The firm don't have any, any, any presentation, council. Um, again, there's a lot of discussion, uh there's C F funds uh for. Uh, originally for the pallet shelters, there's the discussion with the county, can they uh have some more flexibility with that, and I believe they have. But again, I don't have them writing, it's just a a conversation, um the working with B H A. Um, so second slide, looking at the the options available to the council, or where we're at, we have to obligate. We have to obligate before year end, so something has to happen, so we're looking, before we go to the next slide, we're looking in direction from council, which avenue will we go? If we don't obligate, the funds will need to be returned to the. Oh, we're up. Yep, so uh first option, uh continue with the hybrid model, uh with community partners. Enter into interloble, that will obligate the fund, I would prefer to housing authority without specificity, specificity, other than just supporting the hybrid model, hybrid shelter model. That will obligate the fund. Other pros of that, pros of that is we get to obligate the funding. Um, the funding has to be spent by the end of twenty, uh the twenty twenty six, the cons of that, the currently no tangible activities that we've been presented to obligate the funds to, other than just an open I L A. Um, funds must be expended by twelve thirty one twenty six, there's a risk. Uh, was the of the funds not being expended and no flexibility to pull those funds back and reobligate them. Um, the other option we spoke in October about, if we were at this point in time, uh in December, would be able to pivot those dollars back internally in the city. So the fund uh fund existing city public uh safety salaries, um that's an eligible expense, that's easy to do, we've already, we already have those incurred expenses. So apply those funds to public safety salaries, the pros of that, it obligates the funds just like the other fund, you get those obligated. Eligible costs are fully expended, one point one million and twenty four, those dollars are already gonna be able to be applied. Uh, so there's no risk of the funds having to be sent back to the government. Uh, increases undercover in any fund balance, uh increased budget in any fund balance uh for twenty five would move to fifteen percent. Uh, creates flexibility for the city to consider funding needs in twenty twenty five, they have undercover fund balance, the council have flexibility with the forward that come to them. Uh, for needs of the city, need for the shelter, as a case, as things get more materialized and observe. Uh, the cons of that, resolution three thirty three seventy five remains unfunded. And that is what I have for you.
All right, folks. So we've got a couple of options, um so basically um. We continue to obligate funds to the community partners, um or we obligate them, basically, can you put that back up? Yeah.
Or you obligate to city, city.
City public's.
Safety.
Safety services, um which are not fully funded currently, that way, either way, we need to obligate the funds.
I have a third option.
I love Eric's third options, though, but um and Jeff, is it all right if we defer to Eric, or do you want to speak first? I'll just let Jeff go first.
Go ahead. First and then yeah, for a while later.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so thanks for, thanks for bringing up the options, Director Riley, so. This is, you know, kind of what I mentioned several months ago of keeping an eye on, and it was uh appreciate you nominating me to attend the community partners meeting. Um, because exactly for this reason, it's nice, I was there for the city, aware of how the funds work and was able to start the conversation on uh how to obligate them, so. I know I met when I was Director Riley a few months ago to discuss obligation and, you know, whether a site was required or not, and it's, you know, it's it's not, there's a way to do it without it. Lot of, lot of ways to obligate it, um and then I I got P H A in touch with Director Riley as well, so I know they've had a couple meetings, um talking about having those out. And so I think there's actually a draft, uh if I remember right, basically worked on already. So um Jill Stan sent an email, I forwarded on, a kind of summarizing the the progress to date. And she is free for a call if there are questions, um she mentioned it tonight, but so I can always get her on the phone if need be.
Well, um.
Essentially, the uh, there is a site that is, that is very close, um it's taken longer than expected, but. Very promising site that meets all the requirements that they're working hard towards. Uh, in addition to that site, um they expect to have something very soon. Uh, B H A has um awarded a project design and management firm, uh that's been secured, so there is a contract uh expected to be approved uh later this month. Uh, for the site design. Uh, the county has kicked in the uh one point five seven five and C F funding, uh that's nominally developed for the pallet shelters, but in discussions, it's even even a little more flexible than that if needed. So that's good, um again, the the current owners of the site under consideration, um are really fully on board, they've expressed that, which is nice, so there's a good partnership there. Um, they're working to make it happen, so yeah, it's just a matter of basically getting. Getting the final, the final writing sign, again, we're close, it is stretched out longer than expected, but it is close. Uh, they've already issued an R F P for doing the site survey and a preliminary title report. Uh, they've been. Working with the pallet shelter providers and pricing, and so uh essentially they're ready to pull the trigger on that and get those placed as well as the uh, the um, the congregant shelter as well. And they've already drafted an R F P for the shelter operator, and there's already been outreach done, um for example, Joe Crane has had a couple meetings, uh talking about the hybrid shelter model and the team of care. And trying to do that free work on really getting across to the community that this is not just plopping down a salvation army in another part of town, this is a very different uh. Form of shelter. And working on formulating that outreach plan, um and then again, doing that. Doing that hard work of making sure it's successful and all that due diligence with pre-education for the surrounding uh community of where this would go. So that's, that's where they're at now, so it's been really good progress, I know.
Thank you for the update.
Like in, like every project across the city and other places, everything's behind, but there is progress there. So essentially, you know, they're relying on these funds to continue forward. Um, they're relying on the county funds and they're continuing to secure additional funds for commerce and other places.
Um, and so you said you were working with um Director Riley to find out ideas for what, where the ARPA funds can be allocated, what are the ideas that sync up?
So as mentioned, it's a contract with B H A for.
Yeah, so when you're moving off with option A, you need to enter an interval with some, you know, some specificity, specificity regarding shelter. So the aisle needs to be.
It isn't in front of us.
If it's not part of you, could be a direction, if that's a choice.
I mean, that you, you're, you're thinking, the slide is not up.
No, I took it down.
I was just hoping to have. Oh.
So it could be.
Okay.
Public, I can bring it back. Um, but uh, again, the odd wise question, the question was, what, we need to have an aisle A between the city and B H A. B H A has no formal meetings the rest of this year, they've agreed, depending on council direction, I do form a special meeting, that they could be able to approve that aisle A before before. So that would be what we'd be drafting proposed for next week, we'd have that further, if that's the option, if we're looking for direction, but that would obligate the funds. Uh, federal government, um change requirements along the way, how to obligate, uh folks are having to obligate funds, they've really moved a lot of requirements, originally, there was tangible action, there's something to it. Now, we do have some tangible costs that we can call out, knowing there is a plan, a design plan, but I would say just, just the aisle A by itself will obligate.
Uh, can you just forward us that slide or email?
So you can write it so that the funds are, you know, yes, this is going towards um construction or acquisition of equipment or operation of the site. Um, in the future and say, yeah, obviously, these funds are going towards the purpose of the hybrid low barrier shelter.
Uh, I'd like to hear from Eric's third option.
Well, you don't need a third option, if that's all we have to do is a simple I L, I L A that. You don't even have to have a deadline like twelve thirty one twenty six, the ones.
They spent at twelve thirty one twenty six.
So that is a risk.
Without secured land, without a design without.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's risks, so here's another risk, certain options.
So, so here is my option three, and before I can get into it. I have a question for you. So when you obligate, you exercise option two to obligate ARPA funds to police salaries. Does that allow you to take the money that's obligated there already and move it to general fund?
Okay, we got, so what it, what it does, it it uh will go into fund balance and revenue, and it has, I mean, you'll have undercover fund balance.
Right, 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 so it's, this is an accounting exercise, so what I propose you to do, if you can. Put your accountant hat, and I'm not violating bars or anything like that. Which is your government accounting system. Go ahead. And I'll do option two. And then create a a fund in the city of Bremerton that basically obligates the one point one million. To the hybrid shelter. If it gets built.
Does a hybrid shelter? Need us to obligate the funds to them before the end of the year in order for them to get other funding? Is that going to make it difficult for some of their other grant applications?
It's a great point, it actually. It's hard to say specifically, but yeah, it looks, it, it, yes, I mean, I'm gonna say yes, having the city's continued support um would go a long ways towards getting funding from other places.
Eric's point.
I feel does that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we setting aside the the money, but now we have control over it, and if, if the consortium doesn't come up with it by twelve thirty one. This isn't their benefit, if they can't do it by twelve thirty one twenty six, you can carry it over to the next year.
That means also is.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as, so the, you know, the planting and this is all, is allowed, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I would say the intention upon the shelter. I I don't know how I feel about it, it feels, it feels a little.
It's a little gray.
Y- yes, yes, so I believe the council intends upon the shelters or the shelter, if I see what you're trying to do, you're trying to remove that obligation, and so they have more time.
Yeah, I'm tr- I'm trying to help consortium out here.
Right, and I, I.
Just because in in my, with supply thing and and it just feels, I need to dive in a little bit before I say it, but I believe that's exactly what our, our proposal is, is you. You you have undercover fund balance, and again, B H A could be an applicant with that undercover fund balance to come back once they have more, something tangible to ask for that money.
Yeah.
In the new year, but to dedicate it, I don't, I need to look at that, if you're, we're de-federalizing it and then dedicate for the same purpose, we're, I just need to look at that.
I don't want it to be a slush fund, and and none of us do, I'm sure, that's what we're, that's what we're.
And that's why we do it to in front of you, and that's why we're sitting at twelve eleven and twelve eighteen, we need to make a decision, so, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, the the only other thing, I could go with option one, but. How do I know this is not gonna get done like twelve thirty one twenty six?
And I can say that, and I can speak for that a bit, um, but now the group is, um, has been actively looking at backup sites as well. Buildings, and you know, they they focused on this one because it meets all the criteria and the good partnership and a lot of opportunities it presents. Um, but there is backup in there, I mean, I I can just say the group is fully committed to getting this done, they've been working hard on it. And I can guarantee they can, they can spend that money first thing, if that's the worry.
Do we have a contract for the land, is there, is there a bid, is there anything securing the land that this site will be on?
Oh.
Nothing, we don't have it, we propose to us.
There's. There's spoken conversation, there's nothing in writing.
And do we know who the.
That is what I've been.
Not.
It is, it is. Okay. They're in development of getting a agreement together, but they haven't, they don't have that.
There is a.
Well, they're gonna be putting in offer.
Um.
There is an offer, that's kind of like breaking news, yeah.
That's been made in writing?
I believe Steve is dry now or not, but basically as of today, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so there's no secured location, which, here's my question about securing a location, isn't there outreach that needs to be done first prior to securing a location?
That's what they're working on as well.
So they can't even make a bid unless the the outreach has been done first.
I we did it.
Well, I mean, we already own the property, right? Didn't we? But I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's like, we already own the property that you're talking about, the city property, I'm talking, you know where I'm at?
They've been doing outreach on the, on the model, right?
There's an official process, what's the official process for outreach for? Isn't there, am I just?
No, but they, right, they never denied, so. They've already started outreach and done outreach on.
Do you need a?
On the model and how to mitigate impact, right?
Sorry, how to mitigate that?
Uh, so, yeah, I'll reach on the model itself, right, like I'm gonna reiterate, so that folks aren't thinking that it's Salvation Army plopped down in another location, right, that this is a different model of doing things. Um, that has uh, you know, better site control, less impact. And then on top of that, once the site's secured, they're able to do additional outreach ahead of time before.
So there's two outreach processes, and one has been completed with, with feedback from the community for this location they're putting a bid on.
So, yes, say, in the pro, continued, continued education, I'd say, I'll call it.
Okay, so my question is, is there a requirement for any of the grant processes for it, for, for putting up the shelter, is there a requirement for public feedback? On this land use?
Is your question, does the ARPA money require?
There's so many other, the land use specifically.
So not, so the, so nothing for the grant money requires?
The land use, does the land use require public feedback for the, for this level of housing, for this type of?
If it meets the zoning.
So when the land is identified, they're gonna have to submit through.
They have not. Yes, they have.
There's a lot of steps that have to be.
They haven't submitted through you yet.
They don't have a site. They don't have a location, they have, they have no location.
Hold on, let me, let me hear from Garrett really quick, go ahead, Garrett.
We haven't seen any support yet, but that being said, the council did, uh just as you're changed their apartment, uh so you would have a uh. A public process. Or extending, uh normally a a temporary tenant is more, I think, hundred eighty days or like this.
Okay.
We extended it to have a three year period that requires a process. Uh, either, either case, either the more temporary or the more long term requires a public process.
Okay.
So they would.
So.
Secure the site, have ownership of the site, and then submit permits for development.
Okay, I really wish Denise was here, because, because she would be so valuable in this company, I mean, we don't know much more about where the, we can't really, okay. Um, all right, I mean, I'm with Eric on on. I'm with option number two personally. Uh, Michael, you want to talk?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna just say where I'm at, so, like, my heart, my values, I'm with, let's do the I L A. People do make mistakes, if I'm gonna make a mistake, I'm gonna make it, because I have faith in that we can get a shelter for people done.
Okay.
All right. Then the brain a little bit, nah, we could play this little, you know, safety net kind of thing, and uh we could do it, you know, the, the, you know, we, it does. The, the funds, once we've spent them, and, you know, I guess we could create some sort of thing, but, you know, we could also choose to give one point two. Or we might choose to do just one million, you know, we have, will have some control of that, it's possible they might not even need the whole thing, but. So I'm.
They will.
People are good at spending money.
Uh, so, um, but I. I like Eric's model, and I like the, just going for the I L A, which. To me, also sends a good signal.
Yeah, I could. Yeah, I could, I agree with you. I could go either way on that one. I, I could go ahead and just say, you know what, I'm all in. I'm gonna support our community partners and you have our support. That shows our support and gosh darn it, please produce.
Please don't make me make a mistake.
Don't, don't, don't make me. Oh, my goodness.
Ash, but how long does this public process take?
Well, it's got.
So. Does it, will it take? Okay, Anna, go ahead.
I support the ILA. Um, we went into this to get roofs over people's head. Um, you know, to get, to get them sheltered. Um, I'm gonna just have faith. Um, like draw my fingers a little, a lot, but let's just have faith, do the ILA. And get the home addresses of every one of our community partners so we can stand in front of them all through the holiday season.
Well, like, are we gonna go Carol at their houses? I would prefer to just Carol and stare.
Okay, Carol and stare, but, um, so in short, I support the ILA.
Okay, Jane, ILA.
ILA.
Okay, all right, that's the direction I think we're gonna go for. So, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We'll draft that work with, uh, I'll get in touch with you.
Okay. Um, I wanna go, uh, thank you very much to Director Riley. I wanna go backwards for just a hot minute to, to Anna's email. And I wrote on here to twelve study session, um, rather than, uh, directing planning commission. I think we have some more conversation we could make on it. Cause I don't really know what direct, what email I would even send a planning commission. So if it's all right with y'all, I'd like to put this item for discussion on the February twelfth study session. Uh, is that okay? Yep, cool. Okay, Steph, I'll remind you if you didn't hear. Uh, the issue is, was from item A nine and it was on his email. We're gonna put that on February twelfth study session. All right, next up, woo.
Can we kick this one out?
We're gonna kick it out, we're gonna knock this one out of the park in five minutes or less, which is what I put on the top of this, five minutes per, per item, yeah. Okay, we will now discuss item A eleven. A, a study session was held last week by council to develop a list of proposed twenty twenty-five legislative priorities, which Assistant City Attorney Brett Jetty drafted into a resolution. It was recently added to the council packet for our review. I think he did a pretty damn good job of capturing what we were talking about. So the resolution to adopt the city's council, the city council's twenty twenty-five legislative priorities. Um, so have you all had a chance to review it? I have. It has, it encapsulate. Um. Our desire to, uh, to keep the AWC, twenty twenty-five city legislative priorities, oh, the funding. For Kitsap Lake, Warren Avenue, Doris Corridor. Uh, fast ferry sustained funding and then that, there was language that, uh, yep, the administration provided for seventy-five thousand month to cap on in-house public works projects. Everything's there? Okay, shall we consent this? Awesome, consent, okay. Wait, wait, did you have a question, comment? It was really quick and it's very, it's perfect. Yeah, I think it encapsulates everything. Um, great general of attorney, study.
Good guy.
Okay, good guy, good guy. Let's keep both down. All right, they all are. All of our staff are keepers, not just Brett. Okay.
I don't know about.
All right, um, so in keeping with the, um, request of council to review actions, that's here we are, last study session here. Let's review our goals and priorities.
Let's restart.
I think that what we should do is skip any of them that say completed. I know there's probably examples of other ways that we've completed them. But if we could just go to the ones that say pending or in progress. Um, then we can just kind of have a quick briefing on these. If we can do that, we also have it on the agenda in January. So it's gonna come up again if we can't make it through. Let's say we dedicate ten minutes to this. If we need less, we need less. How's that sound? Do you have to send out a suggestion?
Less.
Seven minutes.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, all right. So the first one is two, one whole district meetings on comprehensive plan. We did this, this is completed, okay? All of us did, or, uh, except for Michael, but whatever.
Any panel, I just wasn't there.
Okay, um, so we have completed that. The next one is two, three, public outreach, free budget season in progress, discuss again in September. I don't know, did we discuss? Um.
Did nothing about.
Uh, item two, three. So that was public outreach. This is a finance department. Did you guys discuss it in September? No?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a fail.
So, I'm gonna give you a hint on that, but that's something that you can do. You didn't get an F because this is twenty twenty-five goals as well. So right in early in twenty twenty-five, you're gonna bring it back up. So twenty twenty-five.
Once our review.
Okay, so, uh, Jane, Michael, how are we doing with the, uh, outreach program, VHS? We get a fail for that one, don't we?
That's a fail.
They've been. I think that's really honestly, that's why we haven't made, we were just leaving them alone for a little while, right? We can, I think now.
They're, they're mad at me.
Well, that's been.
That's why you went back to them.
I didn't go back yet, but I will.
Oh, you said you did.
I probably did. I think what I did is I had a conversation with a teacher, but let me, um, actually formalize that in an email over winter break. Um, winter break, um, okay. So number three, completed ongoing. We're doing great at that. Uh, number four, two, Main Street Certification. We already, actually, we're still in progress with that. We have, um, we kind of, uh, had a little funding discussion with them and, um, they have, they have funding allocated in our budget.
On our side of support.
We, yeah, but still in, is it completed or is it in progress?
If this was, or Main Street Certification, the council's done their job.
I would say it's completed.
Right, yeah.
Right, I say we completed that. Um, historic preservation policy.
There's been public meetings about it.
And it worked, uh, Katie Fred on a, uh, I'm gonna call it draft, a concept of a draft.
Great.
There's, yeah, I need to get back to it, but there is some progress.
Okay, September eleventh study session before budget was the chronically vacant building policy development. Michael. Did we do that?
I don't think so.
I think that could be your idea.
Carryover, part of our two-year council door.
Okay, um, shall, Michael, this was kind of something you brought up, right? This is like one of your babies. Um, should we put it on a study session now, February twenty-sixth?
Realistically, yeah, it's just, you know.
Two twenty-six study session, okay? We'll talk about chronically vacant building policy development. Um, council staff, on February twenty-sixth. We're gonna put on item four, four, under economic development, the chronically vacant building policy development for discussion under general council business. Okay. Um, I'll follow up by email too. Incentives for funding, incentives on funding for commercial areas.
We've been doing that.
I don't, uh, why is council president, what was I gonna do to connect with DCD? I don't remember that. I think it was a specific follow-up and we did follow-up specifically, but this was months and months ago. Yeah.
Or four, is that a commercial?
Um. Commercial, Michael, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial. Okay, thank you. That's great. Thank you so much.
Well, we funded the ability for people to drive more quickly past commercial properties.
Yeah.
Another funny one. That's, that's true.
It's better than that. Sign up for like. You, I mean, you're.
Cut our jokes. Are you kidding? Oh, my God. It was so, did we say this is in progress? What do we do with this? Due to many issues topics connected to this goal, council president to connect with DCD. What was I supposed to do? I, maybe I can review with staff what I was supposed to do and I apologize that I don't remember.
I think the tough thing is, it's sort of hard to just go out and look for funding without identified projects, okay? Because.
I wonder when we.
Like, what we're seeing is like, how do we find money to do some of this work in some of these, you know, like business districts? But if you don't have like that sort of shovel ready thing, then you can't really have five for it. And then if, if it's posted, the deadline's coming up soon enough that you're not really able to, like, put something together. It's not like, like a nonprofit that could put together an implication, like the city has to do lots of stuff. So I think it's well-intended, but I think it's a harder one to do. We might be able to rephrase it or something. You know, look for funding for specific projects or something.
Do we want?
We do that.
We could approve the Charleston Business District Plan as Jim Klein keeps asking. Or review it and consider approval.
Hmm.
Yeah, we.
They need to become an, an actual legit org.
Yeah.
We, we need to work in the projects and I think that's part of our public work. So we're waiting back on is the project prioritization. That I know they're working hard on, um, and that they'll feed back into the tip in the middle of the next year. In, from, some of those Charleston projects were on, are on the tip, even if they're in tier fourth moment, remember?
Uh, there's two that we pulled that are in tier three. The other ones are.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two, the, um, the street, um, Rita Bowles. And then there's a wayfinding.
Uh, the wayfinders, okay. So that, so we, so I think we've got a ball on it for the, for the city projects. But I feel like this item was something else. I think this item was like pulling in extra grant dollars for.
I know.
I don't know.
It was something additional and I was supposed to connect, which I did do and take a clarification. But now I don't remember how to update you because it was so long ago. I think it was in the summertime even.
I've been more the cop plan of how long from the boat commercial.
With the llama fingers, but, yeah, those two llamas.
I think there's a lot of misinformation going around about, uh, the Charleston plan. Area-wide planning studies have very general recommendation and it's being used anonymously with sub area. Which is a, a regular story, Doc. Yeah, so both, uh, we, we get those words used. It was an area-wide planning study, very general, uh, suggestion. So. Public Works is looking into capital improvements, the FROZES plan is coming up in twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
The POP plan was already updated and zone code already updated to incorporate the recommendations from that study. So, uh, just, uh, it, when, when you hear about the city adopting formally the Charleston area-wide study and it's not something from a table, cause it's just a, like a, kind of an aspiration.
What I would like to do is mark this goal as ongoing, um, or in progress, I mean. I think that, um, with this information, I think we're gonna just continue to work on it. We specified these two specific areas. We wanna continue to support them next year, right? Or do we wanna look at this item and revise it?
We don't even know what this item is, so.
Okay, I guess then here's, here's actually my instant, my instinctual, uh, recommendation is to, and I don't, and I hate to say this, but at the retreat, look at this item and revise it.
Seven minutes.
Okay, let's.
No, I mean, spend seven.
Uh, you.
I've got an important one that.
I'm gonna go ahead and. Skip to parks ten, discussion. What? We have all of the, oh.
No, we don't.
What about five?
Housing equity, seven, all of a sudden now somebody has pushed that out to twenty twenty-six? A discussion of possible income review of the multifamily tax exemption program?
So.
It's still eight years.
Jane and Anna. What I heard from Michael is that we use the seven minutes that we discussed, we'd allocated. So my recommendation is that we could hold off on discussing the rest of it until the scheduled January timeframe that we have this. We have this back on our agenda in January. If you would like to, let's go back to seven, three.
Well, Jane, I would like to. I don't know why this was a two-year council goal and priority and now it says. During budget process in twenty-five or twenty-six, we'll talk about it.
I didn't write that. That's perhaps a typo.
Who wrote it?
This is interpretation from staff, um, and so it's perhaps a misinterpretation.
Yeah.
I want to, let's ask the rest of, does anybody remember this being something that we would possibly discuss in twenty twenty-six?
The sooner the better. I think it's something we could possibly discuss every year.
Let's discuss it every, every.
Yeah.
Okay.
It has been under five, so ordinance is going for seven eleven or, uh, December eleven study session. We did have that discussion. We've had it again. We were gonna have that one on the study session.
So that's completed.
It's not familiar. We're still working on it.
Okay.
But that ordinance has nothing to do with the landlord license clients, right?
No, it is the landlord.
Yes. But it has nothing to do with reaching out to all the potential unlicensed landlords.
Number five says ensure rental housing standards are met.
Right, but it doesn't say only for licensed landlords under number five. No, but it be, when we have the study session, we talked about that they would have to contact everybody. And they're going to? Well, as soon as they get a list, which is in March.
Our goal is ensure rental housing standards are met. Is this ongoing? Is this in progress? In progress.
This was obviously done sometime before September because it references a date in September as being in the future, so.
Yes, okay, uh, item, uh, we'll just, we're just gonna go through the whole thing then. Um, housing equity six.
I'm sorry, there's too much stuff here that warrants discussion and.
I know.
I, I, I'm asking that we stop.
Okay, I would like to also stop. Okay, so we have this on our agenda in January, so we can come back to it again too. Um, all right, so we are stopping at housing five. Um, I'm gonna, just gonna quickly go through to a couple of things. We're gonna put the chronically vacant commercial building policy development on for the two twenty-six study session. And at our retreat, we're gonna look at the economic, um, goal for five to revise it or even gain clarity. Um, all right, so we're stopping at housing five. All right, so. Um. We're gonna move on to committee report. So Anna, your audit committee.
It will be, so the audit committee meeting, um, is canceled some, and the reason is that, um. In her research into, should we bring parking in-house or in park? Um, what's come up is that nobody wants it in-house, like no department head wants to do it. None of the people that the department heads direct want to be in charge of parking.
It goes under parks.
Or it's kind of comparable to how happy Bremerton.
Will do it.
It's kind of comparable to how happy Bremerton Police Department was when we contracted out to Kitsap Humane for animal control. It's like, yes, so, um, what Jenny is doing is they simplified analysis, which she will present in the January meeting. And she will then, yes, be able to move on to cost benefit analysis of having a communications manager in-house. Okay, all done.
Thank you. All right, uh, Public Works Committee Chair Jane Arbolauski.
Okay, our last meeting was.
November nineteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
And so some of the things have already come to council. Um, one thing that hasn't, uh, the comprehensive plan transportation element update. Then I provided a schedule update, three things are due from the consultant, including the draft community engagement report. And the final list of improvements and when they get those from the consultant, they're going to put them on the website. And when they put them on the website, uh, staff is gonna notify all of council so we can.
Yay.
We can let people know, uh, Sixteenth Street in Winfield, they did an intersection study. We can let people know. Uh, Sixteenth Street in Winfield, they did an intersection study, and after they studied the intersection, they saw no improvements could be made to make it safer itself, the intersection. But they did think that maybe they should swap out Sixteenth and Winfield from one, Winfield should most likely be the arterial, and Sixteenth should be resident. And staff is gonna reach out to the residents that made the complaint. Um, let's see. Uh, we awarded the Bremerton School Don's, School Zone Safety Improvement Project, uh, which is RFPs, Ra- Rapid Flashing Goods, at numerous schools, the majority of the schools, and they're going to make sure that the signage is consistent because at every school, the signage is a little bit different about what hours you can speed, which ones you can't. Uh, the city's, uh, still working with Mason County to get an I L D, um, for sewer, possible sewer service out by the airport.
Been working on that for.
Yeah, it's, it's been sitting with Mason County, so I don't know, maybe they're gonna get it this year. Um, traffic calming policy update, uh, engineering's still working on that, doing an internal review. And after they meet with B P D and the fire department, then they will give us the, um, policy to review.
No investigative study on the center yet?
Nope, I, I asked about that, and they, they said that they thought they had done it.
What?
And I, yeah.
All right.
I asked them, and they.
You need a court?
Said they thought they were done investigating that.
Okay.
Look at Tom.
Oh, look at them.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I couldn't remember that one either, and we asked them.
And then we went over, there's three maps on the city's website of construction projects. For twenty twenty-four, so we went through all of them. Majority are complete, some are, uh, delayed. So staff is updating that, and then they'll be including, um, work that they know they're gonna be doing in twenty twenty-five also.
There's one.
Uh, we requested an in-person public works meeting next week, uh, to discuss this six street plans and as it intersects with Naval Avenue, too. Um, we had a big discussion related to measuring traffic stress versus vehicle stress. Hmm. Oh, and at Eleventh and Washington, they're gonna, E S E is gonna move the guy wire back a little bit closer to the pole, so it's not sticking out so much into the sidewalk.
The only other option there was, like, city fronting sixty grand to get a.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three thing. So moving the guy wire significantly is for.
The fifty-three grand to the skyhook? It'd be for a self-supporting pole that doesn't have a guy wire.
Okay.
Space elevator.
Ah.
That would be crazy.
Okay. Next up, we do have Public Safety Committee Chair Denise Frye, but she is not available. Does anybody who wants to brief, or should we skip it?
Uh, as co-chair, I say we should skip it.
Okay. Um, regional or committees, or other committees or boards since last study session. Jeff?
Oh, it's good. I couldn't make the actual meeting, but watching over that, the K R C C's making.
Yes.
I don't know if you're gonna talk or not, but yeah.
We can break.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got, they've got the, the plans up on the website now. Um, it's, it was a very quick meeting. It was honestly about half the time I thought it might be. Um, I think folks were ready to go. Um, uh, K S O Transit, did they meet?
They may well, they did meet, and, um, I tried to zoom into their meeting, and I could not hear one word of it. But basically, they were presenting the budget, which they had already presented at the study session before. And the budget was just so filled with joy because people were like, because so much of those funds were Climate Commitment Act.
Yeah.
The only thing that I do want to bring forth is the budget includes a shuttle to go from, um, basically the Bremerton Transportation Center by the shipyard to the Gateway Park and Ride, an eleven-minute walk that's connected by a bus that goes every half hour. And, um, they, they were absolutely against having their employees walk, bike, or take, take their own buses back and forth. So that's the only thing I would have said.
Okay. Thanks. Any other?
The good, uh, K R C C legislative reception.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Jane and I, the mayor went to, yeah.
I feel like.
Sounds good.
All right, it was good. Um, can I just briefly highlight something that happened? Um, Catherine Coughlin is a damn hero because he literally saved somebody's life. Uh, they were choking, and we had, like, a firefighter up there. We had, like, E, or E M T.
Sitting right next.
Sitting right next to her. Jeff, like, knocked everybody over to go and, like, perform the Heimlich maneuver on this quarter. I'm here, kids. Just jumped into action. I was closer to her, by the way. And, um, anyway, uh, nice jobs. But, um, I don't know if, that, if we were distracted by the lifesaving efforts of Council Coughlin, but I do feel like, um, some of, like, we didn't really get to have much for questions and answers. Uh, a panel discussion happened, but I don't know if, you know, politicians sometimes can be long-winded. Um, it was, it was, it was a full, you know, and what I like where you got the practice. I don't know what it was. We had, you know, uh, you know, we had both parties represented up there, and I think that K R C C did a great job of attracting, you know, a full range of voices on that panel. There were a full. No, we had the leftist on the left and the rightist on the right. Did you notice? But it was, uh, I think, I think it went well. Um, and the chief of you, what would you like to report on it?
I would just say, I think they're, they're all focused on the right issues, maybe slightly different viewpoints, but it was nice to hear, I thought.
It was the most.
The most part.
I was very happy with the people who represent the city of Bremerton.
Hmm.
You know, both the state and I'm glad I live in the twenty-third district. I think the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth are, were really well represented by. Yeah, you know.
And, yeah, I think, um, well, that we all got a chance to go, and, uh, especially Council Coughlin here, who saves people's lives. Anyway, goes there. Um, and so the next one, uh, and for K R C C itself, um, oh, we already reported out on that. Um, K S O nine-one-one, the only thing that I'll report on that basically is that they're gonna go to monthly meetings instead of quarterly. Um, and so that'll provide an opportunity for more of a study session by, um, and more transparency accountability, all that kind of thing, right? Um, any other regional boards, committees? Okay, this is nine o'clock, so in, in response to go to the order, um, uh, what council has decided by consensus is you get one minute if it's nine o'clock.
I can.
We go to the order. Okay, Eric?
Yeah, so historically, last study session of the year, uh, people announce their intention, whether they want to run for president or vice president.
Okay.
As most of you know, I'm retiring from my real job effective May thirtieth, if not sooner. Also, next year is my last year on council. We are gonna undergo some change with council staff. I think you have an announcement, perhaps. Um, I had in to be council president one last time. I'd like to have that opportunity to do so, and I won't nominate myself, so I'm hoping someone nominates me on Thursday, January second. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know about this tradition, so I got nothing.
So I have a different good of the order.
Okay.
You're, you're done with your.
You made it less than a minute. That was very efficient. Thank you.
I would like to have a discussion at our, the next study session, or sooner if we could, about lowering the onerous rules for, like, a church to, uh, host a safe parking, you know, spot. Maybe we just allow them to have five cars, but they don't have to go through the whole big security plan and the fencing and everything. Because if we spread that out throughout the city, we have a lot of folks without homes that are living in their vehicles, and they're just driving to different places that are unsafe. And I think we should discuss modifying those rules.
Okay. So my question on that, though, is, you're, I mean, you're on public safety now, but we don't know what's gonna happen next year for public, for, uh, committees. So, um, you, council, do you want to see this as a discussion item on a future study session?
Yes.
I'd love to get in churches, too.
Yes.
Like, I know that exists because on, I used to be part of the Unitarian fellowship we did.
Yeah.
But I feel like it wasn't very popular, whether the churches didn't do it. So I'd be interested as to what's holding people back. What's, is something stopping a church from doing this right now?
We have pretty onerous rules for that, right?
And I may be in county.
That are expensive, yeah. And, yeah, the Unitarian church isn't in the city limits.
Yeah.
But now I've been discussing it with constituents and asked them to talk to their, um, church members, too, to see if it's something that would lead in this way.
So should we put this on, um, January twenty-second study session?
Do we have one before that?
We do. Um, I'm hesitant to put it on that one, um, because, uh, what we want to do is, I mean, I get public comment, and we want to get feedback from churches. So.
Well, that's, well, if we have a study session on the eighth, I mean, it's cold out there.
I know.
And, you know, it's not gonna get any warmer.
Okay, all right. So January eighth study session. You got it. Um, and so January eighth study session, um, can you repeat the wording for me?
To modify the rules for safe parking. Safe parking.
Free payment codes, that's what you were talking about.
Yeah.
That's what we modified earlier this year.
Well, we modified it to allow it to be longer, longer term with a lot of rules. But I'd say, you know, the original one where it said you could do it up to a hundred eighty days, you had to have a safety plan, you had to have a fence.
I think that was car-specific.
That's what I'm talking about, is car-specific.
There is a.
Safe parking.
One?
Yeah, it was drawn up just for religious institutions.
Not the one that allows them to do an encampment?
No, no, not an encampment, cars.
Did we get that sent out to everybody?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, so we.
Are you saying it's existing code we have right now?
I believe it. I thought it was, maybe it's not just cars only right now. So maybe we just modify it to make a section for car camping only.
Michael, you, you brought this up.
Um, yeah, but I, but my recollection is, is it, it was somewhat of a bust, but, um.
But like, where can we find it?
I don't, I don't think we have anything specific, but I could be wrong. And the, the one I know is the one that allows a church with some land, uh, this was a few years ago, we did this, that allowed it, but we, we came up with this, like, hundred and eighty-five days or something.
That's the one we just modified.
But then we just, yeah, we just changed that to the three years to allow.
But that's only for, the three years was only for, um, basically pallets, right?
So.
The more sturdy, but I think one eighty still applies to the less.
So we have at least three people who are interested, which means we can work with legal, so I feel like we can flesh it out later.
We'll have to find out whether we have something, have to find something.
Are we, are we three? Who is the ad hoc?
I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, all right. So we're the three, but we can work with legal. Um, and, um, so we'll just flesh that out as we get closer to January. And then if we need to go to another study session, we need, but we can, we can talk later about it. It sounds, okay?
Somebody I am have gone the last.
The last week of January?
Um, December.
December? I mean, I don't think we're gonna be working. I guess we'll talk about it. Okay, thank you. Okay, through the third, so you're not here. You, you will be gone the first. Okay, got you. Um, okay. So any other good of the order? Okay, go ahead.
Um, have we already set up the retreat?
I was gonna bring that up at my good of the order, but I, let's talk about it because I would.
I'm suggesting let's set it up at the briefing when everybody's, like, ready and can all bring their calendars to the briefing for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I, I only have a minute.
Okay.
You're keeping me to a minute, so.
Well, that was one item, yeah.
It was one. The second one is, again, with Garrett's presentation tonight, I really, really think we should reconsider and enforce the agenda bill policy so that we actually have time to read this stuff and, and absorb it and be able to make intelligent comments. Getting stuff at the eleventh hour is, it, it's, it's old, it's tired. Um, that was pretty much all I had, except to say I hope you guys all had a good, happy Thanksgiving. Alda?
Thank you.
Undermined.
All right, any other good of the orders? Okay, so, uh, what we had decided is to flip on and off our retreat to be one year at the golf, uh, golf course, another year at Harborside. This year, we're gonna have it at the golf course. The dates that were suggested were the fifteenth or the twenty-second for the one day there. If we're gonna extend it and have an additional retreat time, we won't have it at an expensive venue, essentially. We'll have it here.
The fifteenth of what?
I'm sorry, February.
One of January.
Because that's.
I've got a lot of things.
Yeah, it's, it's too soon in January. So the fifteenth or the twenty-second were thrown out as potential dates, but that, there's more to come on that. So I know our staff is looking into, uh, what's available there for golf course. Um, but we'll have one day there, and if we have any additional retreat time that we decide we want, um, outside of study sessions, then we'll need to, we'll need to not have it, yeah, at those venues, which I think we're in agreement on that, anyway.
I thought Jane's suggestion, um, at this year's retreat was really good, which is like, let just us meet, you know, without all the staff, and then we can meet with the drain killers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did like that, too. It was council, what are, what are the big ideas? Pass that over to admin, and then say, all right, now let's talk about actionable steps.
So.
People apply.
Can I ask how that's different than a study session?
It would be more meta.
It'd be all day long.
Hmm, we don't do study, we don't do retreats all day.
Yeah, stuff right down.
Fair enough.
Um.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Talk about it tomorrow, next week, later at home at town.
Okay, that's fair. Um, so I was gonna bring, so I already got rid of my good of the order items, which is a retreat possible date, fifteenth, twenty-second of the golf course. Um, okay, I know everybody wants to go. We got an exempt session after this. Thank you for this year. Um, and, uh, everybody, um, we've really, um, this has been a good year. Um, we've had a lot of progress. Um, just, I, you know, if we had had time to go through the goals and priorities, but just seeing that how much progress we've made this year is, um, really encouraging for me. So thank you for being part of that. And it's not always easy. Sometimes we argue, and, um, I appreciate it. I actually value that debate and, and arguing and the, the spiciness that you guys all bring, all bring. Um, okay. The last meeting is Wednesday, December fifteenth, starting at five thirty P M, in the first floor meeting chambers of the Norm Dick Center. Uh, and the public is invited to attend in person or remotely, but anyone wishing to speak during public recognition via Zoom must submit their request to the city clerk by calling three six zero four seven three five three two three, at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Um, immediately following the adjournment of tonight's meeting, the council will meet for an exempt close session to discuss a review, labor negotiations as allowed under R C W four-two dot three zero dot one four zero four B with no action anticipated. Um, me, okay, then I gavel us close, and we're gonna meet for our.